My name is Karen Gardner and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Community Health Center of Cape Cod. Since we started in 1998 as the Falmouth Free Clinic, we've grown in response to our community's need for affordable, quality care for all. Today, we provide medical, mental health, and dental services in Falmouth, Mashpee, and Bourne, and we're proud that more than 15,000 adults and children entrust their care to the health center. Learn more by visiting our website or by stopping by any of our offices.
Life on Cape Cod is different. Everywhere you go, lazy afternoons and evenings on the back patio. On the Upper Cape, Real Estate Associates knows that difference, and so do each of our 65 agents. Discover your new home or special retreat at CapeCodHouses.com. Real Estate Associates, a tradition of excellence on the Upper Cape at CapeCodHouses.com.
Good evening and welcome to the January 12, 2015 Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to begin tonight by just asking for a moment of silence as we remember Frank Duffy's mother, who passed away yesterday. Frank has been our town council for over 30 years, and I know his mother was over 100, but I'm not exactly sure how much. But she certainly, they lived in the western part of the state, and I know she lived a very full life up to the very end. So let's just take a moment to remember her. Thank you. We have a couple of announcements tonight. We received a letter from Governor Baker informing us that the Chapter 90 funds, these are the local transportation funds that help us get our roads and sidewalks up to speed, has been increased from the $200 million to $300 million statewide. And for Falmouth, that means that our previous number was $1,255,646, and the increase will take it to $1,883,469. So that's about a 600-plus increase for us. These were funds that the previous governor held back for whatever reason, just held back $100 million. And one of the first things that Governor Baker did was to reinstate those monies. So we're very grateful to Governor Baker, and we will so let him know how grateful we are. And Julian also has an announcement.
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to confirm that the special legislation, which was sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and approved by a town meeting regarding the Little Pond wastewater improvement project that will allow the reimbursement of some costs related to grinder pump acquisition and installation, that legislation was approved and signed by the governor, and we appreciate the support and assistance and leadership of our legislative delegation, and we thank the legislature as well for their support, and we appreciate the governor's endorsement as one of his final acts as governor. So that gives this Board of Selectmen an additional tool moving forward on the important wastewater project, so we're happy to announce that as well.
Thank you. So now, next we want to announce the schedule for the April's special town meeting. Doug?
I move this calendar that the Selectmen announce a special town meeting on Monday, January 12, close the warrant on Friday, January 23. Selectmen vote articles and execute the warrant on Monday, February 9. Publish the articles only on Friday, February 13. Selectmen will vote the recommendations on Monday, March 16, and publish the warrant with the recommendations on Friday, March 27. And the special town meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 14, 2015. So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I would also like to announce that this coming Monday at 8:30, there will be a breakfast, a national holiday breakfast, recognizing the work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This is a breakfast and a project and a day that is put together by No Place For Hate Committee in town, and also by the Affirmative Action Group, and also by Rabbi Elias Lieberman. Now, I want to mention, I happened to attend, I don't know how many years ago, the very first meeting of No Place For Hate. And I remember the first meeting was at the Jewish Community Center over in East Falmouth, and Rabbi Lieberman was the one who actually brought everyone together and said, "We need to, we need to become a community that respects No Place For Hate." And that's how it all started, and it has just grown from that day, and I know it was over 10 years ago, that more and more people in the community have become involved in it, as well as the schools. And that will take us to the, what I think is kind of a separate thing, but connected, which is the Proclamation for No Guff Week, which is January 26 to the 30th in 2015. Rebecca?
The proclamation, whereas, "No Guff Day" has been celebrated since 2001 at Falmouth High School, when Adjustment Counselor Greg Gilbert worked with students to find a provocative way to handle conflict. They came up with the phrase "No Guff" and worked with Graphic Arts teacher Doug Rysbell to print "No Guff" T-shirts for students. Shortly after the first celebration, Mr. Rysbell was killed in a tragic motorcycle accident. Since then, "No Guff" has been held in his remembrance as he impolled students to get involved in a creative and positive atmosphere. And, whereas, by taking the pledge and making a concerted effort to observe the "No Guff" mantra, community members work together and support each other in keeping a positive attitude and creating a positive environment. The "No Guff" pledge, "I will not speak or text anything negative about anyone for an entire day. And, whereas, celebrating 'No Guff' can raise awareness, change the environment, and help people feel better about themselves and others by discouraging negative remarks, put-downs, and bullying. And, whereas, the town of Falmouth is a 'No Guff' community. Celebrations and observations are planned throughout the week. Falmouth citizens are encouraged to come up with creative ways to celebrate the "No Guff" concept at home, at school, at work, and during leisure time. Now therefore, we, Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Rebecca Moffett, Susan Moran, and Samuel Patterson, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by authority vested in us, do hereby call upon the citizens of Falmouth to participate in all activities related to the "No Guff" policy and proclaim, January 26 to the 30th, 'No Guff' Week. In witness thereof, we have here unto set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed on January 12, 2015."
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. I forgot to mention on the Martin Luther King Breakfast, that it's Monday at 8:30, from 8:30 to 11:00 a.m. at Kuna Messit Inn. The guest speaker is Nick Carlin, who is an author. There will be a presentation by the Morse Pond students, and there will be special music by Rabbi Elias Lieberman. The tickets for adults are $15, and for students $10. And you can make your reservations and buy a ticket by coming to Town Hall. They have tickets in the personnel office, and you can also access the website, Falmouth HR, which is Falmouth Human Resources, F-A-L-H-R, at FalmouthMass.us. So I encourage everybody to, since some people, not everybody doesn't have to work money, but for those who don't have to work, it'd be really nice to have you come and join everyone at Kuna Messit Inn at 8:30. Thank you. Okay, next is public comment. Is there anyone, yes sir, who would like to speak on any matter not on the agenda? If you go to the microphone too, and also state your name for the record.
My name is Tom Hodson. Some of you will know my wife, Christine Gault. Some of you may have known my father, Slope, who was a resident of Falmouth for many years.
Absolutely.
I'll keep this as brief as possible because I know you've got a long meeting.
Three minutes.
What's that?
Three minutes.
Three minutes? Somebody told me two.
Well, two, I guess.
I better extend my remarks.
I forget. One place I work, it's three, and here it's two, so two is four anyway.
What I'm here for is expressing a concern about the Steamship Authority, any number of issues, the proposed expansion and withhold, the recent rate increase. Some folks I know over on the Vineyard recently set up a petition asking the Steamship Authority if they would please, in light of the astonishing drop in oil prices, roll back their recent rate increases. And in one week, we have over, almost 2,800 signatures, and many people have added additional comments. There are people from the Vineyard, from Nantucket, from Falmouth, from Woods Hole. There was even somebody who wrote in from Germany, which is kind of funny. But I brought this document to you as an expression of concern and as, in hopes that you will take a moment to just leaf through it. It's ridiculously long, and some of the comments are made in utter ignorance of how the Steamship Authority runs. But you've, we have a lot of mutual interest in seeing to a Steamship Authority that's run well, that's run economically, that pays attention to the needs of all the towns it serves. So I'll just leave this with you, and if you're...
We'll be glad to...
I had it printed out, so I'll give you the copy that's for you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Hodson.
Thank you very much. I sent you all an email earlier today, so if you...
Could you go back to the microphone?
All right.
Otherwise, people at home won't be able to hear you.
Okay. I did send you an email earlier today, and so you have contact information for me and for some of these other folks, should you care to get in touch with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on a public comment? Hearing none, we'll go to the minutes of January 5, the public session. And I want to thank our new minute taker over here. I think you did a really great job capturing the real essence of our business and our discussions. Thank you very much.
I talked to Denise already about this, but do you have one change on page five? That Jennifer Petita's mentioned early and then referred to as Joanna for the rest of that page. I just want to make sure that change is made. I don't think she's changed her name at that time.
Okay.
So I'd move approval of the minutes with that change.
Oh, wait a minute, I think Sam, got it.
I have several possible changes on page three. I'm more than happy to supply them in written form, but I think some of the, your interpretations probably were not accurate.
On page three, maybe you could discuss them for us?
Okay. At the very top of the page, under the first bullet, I would have worded it as Sam Patterson questioned the balance between building reserve and stabilization funds and using recurring revenue for operating expenses that impact the quality of lives of services for citizens. The example he used was not allowing the schools to meet needs of children experienced at dysfunctional home environments by offering school nurse support, non-academic programs, and other town human services. And then on the, one, two, three, four, fifth bullet, which substitutes Sam Patterson said, "Proposed FY16 budget estimate state Chapter 70 funds at the same amount as FY15 were estimated at the same level as FY15. The schools were expecting to qualify for additional FY16 Chapter 70 funds from the state as a result of qualifying courses they provide in cooperative vocational training and education. If additional Chapter 70 funds were allocated for Falmouth for FY16 after the spring town meeting, the school department could not be increased, budget could not be increased until the fall special town meeting. This additional revenue would be too late for them to hire staff to restore or add programs." And then the next to the last bullet on page three, I would change it to, "Sam Patterson passed out graphs that compared the cost of major elements of the town's costs from 2002 to 2013. The graphs suggest that the school department percentage of the town's expenses have continued to decline over that period, even though school enrollment remained essentially constant over the last few years. He felt that should be reconsidered to address unmet needs of Falmouth schoolchildren." And then the last bullet on that page, Nick Lowell, Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, said that the numbers used in the graphs were taken from the town's annual reports. The numbers do not include many other costs the town incurs for education, such as debt service for school facilities." So I would propose those changes.
Discussion? Yes. On the second to last change, I would just make a connection that it's the same, the graph that was prepared by Nick. I didn't hear that in what you, just so it's clear that it's the same graph. I just didn't hear that in what you said.
Sure.
That's my only request. Okay, and you have a motion to make those corrections and additions?
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just ask that you, and I know you will, provide them to Denise. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. And now we are going to have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. So if the Finance Committee would like to join us up here, you are welcome to do so. There is room for six. I don't know how many of you are here. We are going to interview... So many candidates?
Two for three positions.
There are three vacancies on the Finance Committee, and we have two candidates here tonight to be interviewed, Stephen Angelo and Walter Crati. And the way we usually do this is, this is, these appointments are done jointly during this time, when they are interim appointments, they are joint appointments by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and all the votes are considered in the aggregate. So there are five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Yes.
On this vote, it has to be the majority of those eligible to vote. And we have 12 members on the Assemblyman's Committee, and so there are 17. So it has to be the majority.
And so there are seven of you here tonight, and that makes the...
There's nine of us.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's nine of you.
But it's the 12.
The 12.
You have to use that number, because they're eligible to vote.
Okay. So, but everyone here tonight of this Finance Committee and the Selectmen, so it will be the majority of those present?
No.
No?
Majority of those eligible to vote. There are, we have 12 people who are eligible to vote.
Okay.
Doesn't matter how many are here.
Plus you have five, so that's 17 total. So in order to get a majority, we'd have to have nine positive votes for any one person.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, okay.
That it will take nine votes to be, to be the appointed member. Okay. Then our first interview will be with Stephen Angelo. Steve, maybe you could start by, yeah, if you would, please. Introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested, and thank you for your application and for your bio. That was very helpful, not that I didn't know all that, but that's okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Steve Angelo, a resident of Falmouth, resident for about 13 years, full-time. I've been coming down here for quite some time, from Saugus. I was a schoolteacher after I left college, did that for about five years, and after that, I was elected to the state legislature for 10 terms, served five of those, five of those terms as a member of the Environmental Committee of the state legislature, and one is the government regulations chair. As a matter of fact, in 1987, we helped create the state revolving fund at Falmouth. It's taking a bit of the job right now. Did a lot of things on Cape Cod, actually, with the Cape Cod Commission, and many other things I was heavily involved in. After serving as a state representative for 20 years, I was asked by my town to apply for the town manager's position. I did so for six months while I was state representative to see if I enjoyed it. I did, and I became the permanent town manager and stayed there for five years. My dad ended up very ill, so I left the town manager's job early, took a year off to care for him. We moved out to Cape Cod town, and then I started to apply out of state for town manager's jobs. I was a town manager in Connecticut for several years. Then I became the program manager for A+ Technologies, which ran the, was a private contractor of the state's emissions program for automobiles. You get your sticker, and that's what we did. We administered 1,500 locations throughout the state. We had five offices, and I directed and ran that. Had been very, very involved with municipal and state government for many years, saw the opportunity with three vacancies of serving, loved public service. We elected the town meeting twice now, and fulfilled an expired term before that, and thought this would be a good opportunity to get involved and hopefully be helpful to members of the Finance Committee and members of the Board of Selectmen.
Doug?
In any of your past municipal workings, have you dealt with a town that has a Finance Committee?
Yes. Appointed differently. The moderator in the town of Saugus, appointed the Finance Committee, so that was different.
That's how we are doing it also.
Completely separate.
Usually, usually it's done by the moderator here also, except for...
Yes, yes. In Connecticut, the Board of Selectmen was the Finance Committee, which is kind of interesting. They kind of had two bites of the apple, and it was kind of a different process than I was used to, and this is a different, another process where you go before and get interviewed by the Selectmen and the sitting members of the Finance Committee before you can serve. But certainly understand the role of a Finance Committee, know what's expected. Would have to read up on some of the changes in municipal law since 2001, and I'm certainly prepared to do that, but would like the opportunity to serve.
Rebecca?
I guess I knew a little bit that was here telling us about you, but, and when I think about the Finance Committee, what do you think is your specialty? Is it the schools? Is it, what part of the city budget and finances of the town?
I'm very interested in the minutia. I went to two different communities that had very large deficits when I first got there. One community had about a three-quarters of a million dollar deficit. The second community of Connecticut had about a half a million dollar deficit. So like Governor Baker did today, I considered hiring freeze, and I went from department to department, because I sat in the middle of the fiscal year one community, and I asked for reversions back from the department heads to help me balance the budget. And it was, it was, they had given tape with the department heads, looking at what municipal services that we needed to provide for the remainder of the fiscal year, to see what we could do, what we could put off, hoping that free cash and fall would let us supplement some of those things we couldn't do because we needed to reduce the budget. So I liked really getting into the nuts and bolts of government. I enjoyed it immensely when I, when I served as manager, and I really liked the fact that this town meeting is so large. We had a 50-member elected town meeting in one town, and it was very difficult, easy to block things with a third of the vote. A lot of zoning changes we would like to have gone through to help with economic development we couldn't do, and really had to get involved in that whole process with sitting down with individual town meeting members. It's not as, maybe easier or harder with such a large town meeting, but I think it's much more representative of the community in general, unlike some of the other communities that I served in, hope that is as you wish.
There will be a point after you're elected, or however this turns out. Which committee in town would you like to be a member of, or the liaison? Is there one that just kind of holds a special claim with you?
I would, I would serve anywhere. I'm very interested in public works. I think that that's so important to me, especially like Falmouth, with so much infrastructure that needs to be addressed. Wastewater, solid waste, two areas that I spent a lot of time on and developed a lot of policy on, so I could be helpful there. But wherever, whatever's needed to do, I would be more than happy to, to serve in that capacity.
Thank you. Judy?
Steve, working for Baker's comments, are you interested in all the departments? Are you willing to serve on all the different departments that you're assigned to?
I have the time to be helpful, and I would try to be as helpful as I possibly can.
And you would have the same interest in all the different ones?
Yes, equally, yes.
Okay. And one more question. We are extraordinarily busy between January, November, January, December, and March. Are you around this time of the year?
Yes, I am. I am.
Okay. I will hold you to it. Thank you.
Peter, after your first year, what would have happened for you to have described your year as success?
In which capacity?
As a member of the Finance Committee. What do you, what role, what would happen in the, from your perspective?
Well, besides attending every meeting, you know, not going to be rated by the chairman of the Finance Committee. I would hope that I could just be helpful. I hope I gave a reputation with doing my homework and making sure that I talk to the profit heads to find out what their needs are. And obviously, the Finance Committee is a fiscal watchdog for the taxpayers. In general, you're accountable to them, and I hope I can work cooperatively and get a reputation that I'm a very cooperative person who works with people, who tries to get the job done, and to try to make certain we have the resources to run it. I hope I get that reputation. I would be very pleased if that were the, a result of my first year, that I do my homework.
Thank you.
I have a question. Considering you have been a town manager in two different communities, so that gives you a very broad understanding of all of the, all of the departments and all of the responsibilities, and all the aches and pains that go along with managing a town government, and why did you happen to choose the Finance Committee over above some of the others?
I believe that this were I could be most helpful. I have, I believe a lot of resources, a lot of knowledge about municipal government, how it relates to state government, how it relates to the town in general, and I thought this would be a good fit for me. And I want to learn as much about the town as I possibly can. You know, I, I like a lot of folks who were born here. Many people choose to live in a community... Many people choose to live in a community and when you live in a community, you want to be as helpful as you can, learn as much about it, be as helpful as you possibly can. And I love public service and thought this would be the best place and the best fit for me. I looked at the Solid Waste Committee too, but after, my main goal in legislature was to take an incinerator in Saugus and get acid gas scrubbers put on. So I worked for 10 years on solid waste issues and I co-chired the Special Commission on Solid Waste and the Special Commission on Housing and Waste and the Special Commission on Wastewater. And I did a lot of work there. I thought it changed and I really got involved with the municipal finance issues when I was a manager in actually three communities. I served as an interim in New Hampshire for about six months and it was a town administrator's position. They needed someone, they knew me, they called me and I filled it for six months. Didn't like the administrative, I liked manager's position, not the town administrator's position and left there and really loved that sort of atmosphere of finances.
Great, thank you. Any, anyone have questions? No? Okay, thank you very much, Steve. And now we'll ask Walter Crowdie to come forward and you can do the same thing, Mr. Crowdie.
Sure. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to everybody. Unlike Steve, this would be my first direct involvement with town government. I first came to Falmouth when I, in college, when I played for Falmouth in the Cape Cod League. I've been a property owner here since 1984 and I've been, excuse me, living up here full-time since 2000. I have, my background is basically, I had a government major in college, but my background is primarily a business background. I had 20 years of corporate management experience prior to coming here and also six years of small business management. So I think I understand the business community pretty well. Since I've been here, I've spent 13 years as an athletic director and physical education instructor at a private school over in Hyannis. So I have a broad background in youth sports and coaching and all that. And, you know, again, I had also put in as, maybe I could be of assistance on the Recreation Committee because I, obviously, I know a lot about that. But like I said, I would like to think I could bring my business background and experience into, I hope, a good advisory role with the Finance Committee. I know a lot of what you must do is interact with local businesses and major companies and I think I have a pretty good organizational skills, pretty good financial background in general from my business management experience. And like I said, primarily, I just wanted to, like Steve said, I wanted to make a contribution to the town. Up to now, I haven't had the time available, but since I retired from the athletic director's position, all I'm doing now is officiating basketball and baseball and softball games, so I have plenty of free time. So I was hoping I could offer that in some positive way to, to the town.
Thank you. Doug?
Different question this time, maybe, because the Finance Committee may not state it, I will state it. The Finance Committee is one of the hardest working groups and particularly from January to mid-March, it is a ton of work that they put in and really looking at every, I don't say every penny, but pretty close to every dollar that's spent in the town. And I'm not sure that's a real question as much as just to, I wanted to acknowledge to the Finance Committee how much we appreciate the work they put into it and just, I hope you're prepared for, they will be working you hard the next two or three months.
Oh, I am. And, you know, I had, obviously, when I chose that as my first choice, I realized that was obviously a key committee in helping the town run and I would be anxious to contribute whatever I could and would, you know, would like to think that would give you a good insight into the inner workings of the town or be a good insight. So I, when I mentioned I'm doing officiating, the beauty of that is you can schedule your time. You can say, all right, I'm not available for these particular days or I am. So it gives me a lot of flexibility where, you know, if I had to contribute time here, it wouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
Becky?
I notice you've been here 30 years.
Yes.
Tell me some of the major changes that you've noticed in this town in 30 years.
Oh, wow. It's grown, obviously, tremendously in population and year-round population, in the businesses that have sprung up. I'm sure the schools have got much bigger. You know, it's become, I think, when I first came up here playing in the Cape League, it was kind of a vacation town, not a, not a big year-round population. But I would say that would, to me, would be the biggest notice, change I've noticed is how big the year-round population is. So obviously, it's a pretty substantial challenge for you people as Selectmen and committees to run the town effectively.
My purpose of that question is how well you know the town. And I thought, Walter, if you've been here 30 years, you know a lot about it. So it's not as if, as you would come into town with a lot of experiences, maybe in finances, but maybe you don't understand the town. So 30 years has given you a good way to look at it. You might appreciate your answer.
I think so, yeah. Yeah, I think it's a great little town, I really do. I was raised in a small town Winchester up in the side of Boston, so it reminds me a lot of that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Peter Jacomozy, could you tell me what you would consider the most important parts of a departmental budget review? How would you go about attacking it? What pieces?
Well, from my, from my business background, obviously, you have to have objectives for the town and things that have to be done. Point number two is you have to have a budget that fits those objectives and do them economically. And the other thing I would think would be to do them professionally. You know, have, have the right people contract for the work, know how to vet people, whether they're contractors or whatever. And I've had experience doing all of that. So again, I think as a taxpayer, as we all are, you know, what we want to do is to say, all right, there are things the town needs, but we want to spend the money effectively and we want to have the jobs done completely and professionally. And I think my business background has taught me to do that, all the things. Every step, without going into detail, that I took in my business background, I was tremendously successful in accomplishing all the objectives and bringing them in under budget.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, Judy?
We work in subcommittees, Mr. Crowdie. And are you available to meet with subcommittees during the day?
Yes, ma'am. Uh-huh, sure.
You are?
Yeah.
Because they have to meet with the department heads.
Okay.
And you have to work around here, they are hours.
Yeah.
And you won't be available during the day?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I don't know, I mean, are we talking about eight, 10, 12-hour days or just part of a day? Yeah. Like I said, the beauty of what I'm doing now is I have the flexibility of, if I know that you have meetings or things I have to do, I can schedule my other activities around it, so that wouldn't be a problem.
Anybody else? Yes, Sam?
Walter, town budget is quite different from a private business budget. You know, we have identified a certain number of revenues and then we have all of the costs that come associated with all of the services provided by all the departments. Do you have any experience at all at meshing the two together and some sense of the difference between the way a town would run its finances and the way a private business would run its finances?
Well, I obviously, like I said, this would be my first opportunity to work within a government structure, but I'm assuming the objectives are the same. In other words, there are things you have to accomplish. There's revenue that you take in to get them accomplished and you want to get them done in the most economical and professional way you can. So I'm assuming that's a big similarity. Now, again, I won't pretend to say I know how all the inner workings of, you know, the group here are. Hopefully, I would learn that, but I've worked with a number of different groups, both in the business community, I was in the military for three years, I've been in the athletic community. So I think part of what you have to do is adapt to the situation you're in. In other words, find out what their objectives are and where you can make a contribution. So that's probably the best answer I can give.
Thanks.
Anybody else? No? Okay, we're all set then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crowdie.
You're welcome.
We have three openings tonight and we have two candidates. So it isn't like we have to choose. We do choose, but we choose more based on qualifications, I think, and fitness and interests and all of that rather than vacancies. So as Judy said, it will take, what is it, 12?
Nine. Nine votes in favor of any one candidate.
Nine favorable votes, votes for each candidate. So I will call the vote and what I will do is go around the room and ask you to state your name and I'm going to go this way and then state your...
I would actually prefer to nominate each one individually.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll nominate the appointment of Stephen Angelo to the Finance Committee.
Second. Good. Okay, so that's what we will do. We will vote on Stephen Angelo and we will start with Chuck and go around the room. So if you just state your name and, and whether it's an aye or a nay.
Chuck Eastman, aye.
Joseph Rowlett, aye.
Wendy Vogel, aye.
Mary Harris, aye.
Deborah McGuire, aye.
Judy Miyani, aye.
Rebecca Moffett, aye.
Sam Patterson, aye.
Susan Moran, aye.
Doug Jones, aye.
Pat Flynn, aye.
Peter Jacomozy, aye.
Sue Smith, aye.
Nick Lowell, aye.
Unanimous. That's awesome. Yes, great, Steve. Welcome.
New blood.
I'm sure the Finance Committee will, I know that we're very happy to have you, as will the town, so thank you. And now, Doug?
I'd also like to nominate Walter Crowdie to be added to the, to the Finance Committee.
Is there a second? Okay. Same routine.
Chuck Eastman, aye.
Joseph Rowlett, aye.
Wendy Vogel, aye.
Mary Harris, aye.
Deborah McGuire, aye.
Judy Miyani, aye.
Rebecca Moffett, aye.
Sam Patterson, aye.
Susan Moran, aye.
Doug Jones, aye.
Pat Flynn, aye.
Peter Jacomozy, aye.
Sue Smith, aye.
Nick Lowell, aye.
Again, unanimous. And congratulations to both Stephen and Walter and to the Finance Committee. Thank you for being here.
I do think it's quite fortunate.
We can do our business like that all the time and it'd be great.
I do think it's quite fortunate for the Finance Committee and for the town to have come up with two people who are so qualified and a different kind of qualifications, I think it'll be very, very useful.
Very good.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you very much. So that part of our meeting is ended. And thank you for being here. This is a wetland hearing and I'm going to read the announcement. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under section 240-77 Wetlands Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, January 12th, 2015 at 7:35 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the application of Ninus Marina Realty Trust, Melissa McKim trustee, who are the proposed project, including the removal of a portion of the existing licensed timber bulkhead and boardwalk, the removal of licensed solid fill, the replacement, construction and maintenance of a timber vinyl sheet bulkhead, the repair, reconstruction of an existing stone riprap and proposed improvement dredging 300-plus in Falmouth Inner Harbor and located at 306 Scranton Avenue in Falmouth. Area affected is Falmouth Harbor. And Michael McGrath for the applicant.
Thank you.
My name is Mike McGrath. I'm a registered engineer and a professional land surveyor. I work for Homes and McGrath. We prepare the permit applications. The first exhibit I have here that you don't have just shows where the location of the site is. This is Vedant Sound, this is Falmouth in the harbor. So the location is down at the southerly 20% of the inner harbor. And this is, orient that the same way, it would be like this. I'm going to turn it this way. This is Scranton Avenue, this is Falmouth in a harbor. And this is, there's a single family dwelling there, there's a boat shed here and there has been a marine business here for a long time. And what the proposal is, is that there has been a solid fill that was permitted in 1915. The existing water line comes out like this, comes across here and comes back. And what we're proposing to do is basically take the existing bulkhead and take it out, dredge the material and build a new bulkhead in this location. This requires a special permit because we're altering a bank of, of basically a saltwater harbor. The, there's a complete construction technique that was filed. Basically, what we're actually going to do is excavate down here to a significant depth by, by machine. We're going to de-water the material on site. We're going to leave this in place and then we're going to drive the new bulkhead in and then after the new bulkhead in is, remove this. The material was tested and it was all sand. We propose that we are going to give it to the town if the town, and our initial discussions with the town is they'll take it. I don't know exactly when this will occur because we have three more permits after this permit. There's, permits are like the skin of an onion. You peel off a layer and there's another layer underneath. So we have three more layers after this. So the material was found not to have any contamination in it, so I believe that this is an appropriate activity. We're also, there are piles at the corners of the existing bulkhead that are going to remain. There's a substantial bolt that ties up here and basically it's going to move in a little bit. It sort of rocks and rolls a lot when the island, well, when a big ship goes by. So the bottom line is, I think this is an absolutely appropriate activity. We have an order of conditions from a Falmouth Conservation Commission approving this. Are there any specific questions that I can answer?
No, but there is one thing I wanted to make clear during the hearing, is that this is not for any commercial or business operation, it's for the private use of the owners of the property. Is that your understanding?
Well, it's zoned marine, so he does have long-term leases that would be allowed under zoning. So while he has, he owns the boat there, that wouldn't, if there's different ownership, there would be a different use. So it is owned from, it isn't a marine zoning district. So it is allowed under the zone bylaw to rent out slips.
But the intention of the larger bulkhead is for the one boat heading parallel to the harbor, not potentially tying out perpendicular?
Right. We, that's right. Right now, but for instance, if he had a smaller boat, you could easily do two boats here.
But not...
But not at the moment. No, they're not going this way. No, no, they're, they're...
And I'm just worried with it being a marine in a district and, you know, by right, they could do that, I guess I would want to have it where conditions that we understand it is not going to be coming out in that direction from the bulkhead in the future.
That would be an appropriate condition to say that any boat that ties up alongside this, or ties up to this bulkhead has to tie up alongside.
Alongside. Questions? Becky?
I went out to look at this property and my first comment, I would like the Selectmen to know, it is a beautiful piece of property. And I think that the lawn that is from that, I guess it's a boat house that is on Scranton Ave, it's going to be an acre. And the thing that I noticed in thinking about what they are requesting, I didn't know exactly what the purpose was. I walked all through that area and I didn't understand what exactly they needed to do because it all looked correct to me. So, but my idea is that anyone who keeps a piece of property in the condition that that property is in is very interested in taking care of any part of what they own. There's a look to it that is very impressive. And even going up around the buildings, I walked around the house and I walked down the side and I, there wasn't anything out of place. It's, it's a beautiful piece of property there. So, and just saying, it gave me an idea of the personality of the people and their character and I know that doesn't have one thing to do with the bulkhead, but I do think that if they are asking, it appears that there's a reason. Now, I haven't heard the reason of that bulkhead yet and I haven't heard you say that.
Oh, sure. Right now, he ties his boat here and there, when the traffic comes by with larger ships, his boat tends to rock, so he's just trying to get a little bit more space between him and the channel.
So he's actually making the channel wider? So he's actually making the channel wider?
Well, there's a, he's making the navigable area wider because there's an Army Corps of Engineer channel here. And so the Army Corps of Engineer maintains the channel in the middle of Falmouth Inner Harbor. And under the regulations, there's a channel there. So that's why I'm making the distinction.
Can anybody else wish to make a comment? I was looking for the comments from the harbor master and the shepherd warden, but I actually didn't see them in here. I meant to ask about that this morning and I didn't.
If I could answer that, the harbor master asked me to add some specific dimensions to the plan, which I did. And under the, when we filed the notice of intent, there was written testimony filed with the commission. I don't have those with me, I don't believe. But I do have a comment from Division of Marine Fisheries. It basically says that dredging is prohibited from January 15th to May 31st of any year because of the, to protect winter fonder. And we also, they do not recommend placing sand on beaches from May 1st to July 31st because of posho crabs. And I think that's the major thing as far as limitations. If you want to copy this, I'll be happy to give it to you. It is mentioned in the narrative that we filed accompanying the...
Yes, thank you, Michael. Also, I would, there's a, there's a comment in the special conditions that I meant to inquire about today. It says, "If during installation refusal is encountered prior to specified design depth, the Conservation Commission shall be notified immediately." What does that mean?
There's, if you, the way that this particular bulkhead's going to be constructed, the inland one, is they actually stand these tongue and groove sheets up and they drive them. And what happens is that you, we specify a minimum depth. If you don't have minimum depth, then you have to increase, well, you have to address the fact that you don't have the right depth. You basically reinforce the structure in a different way. And what the commission is saying is that if for any reason we drive down and, for instance, hit a boulder, we have to, we have to let them know. Once in a while, we do hit refusal.
So refusal's the inability to drive for deeper?
Yes. I think the plans call like, well, I don't have one in front of me, but I think they call for like 20-foot penetration. If you get 18 and it stops, then you have to make the rebias different. That's all. The tie rods.
I also wanted to mention that we received an email on Friday from Leslie McDonald of 96 Queen Street. And she says, "The proposed work at Scranton Avenue will be on the site of the town's electric plant, which was built in the early 1900s after the original dredging to create Falmouth Inner Harbor. The building here was called the Parthenon. State regulations regarding properties fronting dredged water bodies call for public access. A walkway here would continue access around the harbor from Robbins Road, past the flying bridge and the boatyard, bringing us much closer to the clam shack. I think there are many residents and visitors alike who would appreciate efforts to facilitate public access along this part of the harbor. And thank you for your consideration." We looked into that today. And public access under a Chapter 91 is not within the purview of the Board of Selectmen. Public access is part of the Chapter 91 rules and regulations, but they are handled by the state and not by us. So we have notified her that this is not something we can take up, that it would have to be brought to the state under the Chapter 91 regulations, Wetlands regulations.
I do feel a little bit awkward not having a report from the harbor master and the Department of Natural Resources. I know we do have a DMF report, but I would want to, I'd go under advisement until we actually get those written reports on this fairly substantial project in the inner harbor.
Perhaps it would be better if I requested a continuance.
That would be helpful.
That way, it's appropriately done.
Our next meeting is February 2nd. Is that all right with you, February 2nd?
Yes. I would request that Board of Selectmen allow me, I would request that...
That we continue the hearing to July?
Continue the hearing until February 2nd.
At, is, is there a time that we can set it? Thank you, Michael, for doing that. Sam?
Maybe it's appropriate to have any input from anybody that came here to actually testify as part of this public hearing?
We can ask them for that. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this project? Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm a neighbor of...
Would you go to the microphone, please?
Yes, I'm a neighbor of the McKims property, Ninus Marina. And...
Your name, sir?
Oh, James Murphy. I live on Swing Lane, right off of Scranton. And I've known Al for quite a while. So when he built the house, he's very meticulous. Everything he does, he does top shelf. So I recommend that the Board of Selectmen would approve this for Al McKim. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Yes, sir?
Mark Ghul, Precinct 6. And reference Mrs. McDonald's correspondence, I would hope that the Selectmen would give consideration to a public use that would be instrumental in enjoyment of Falmouth. So even though it is in the purview of the state, I would hope the Selectmen would have a distinguishable opinion that they might give to the state on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who is in opposition who would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a time, sir? Seven. Okay, so...
I would move that we continue this hearing upon request of the applicant until February 2nd at 7:15.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Proposed unanimous. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to a few other appointments. And the first one is Barbara Dixon, who is an applicant to the Golf Advisory Committee. And there is a vacancy for an at-large position with a term that runs to June 30th, 2017. So, Ms. Dixon, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I just, I included, I copied my resume. And probably to make it brief, where I can stay on to the two minutes.
Oh, you, no, the two minutes doesn't apply to this. That's only the public comment.
Don't take care of it, right? My husband and myself are residents here in the town of Falmouth. We've been here for 10 years. We've moved, living here permanently for four years. I work in Boston. I'm a nurse. My background, as you can see, I've been doing it all my life. I was an appointment at the city of Brockton. And I was on the Air Golf Commission for five years. Enjoyed it wholeheartedly. And when I saw the position open up, that was really why I applied for it. I also sat on the Brockton Women's Commission for 10 years, chaired the commission, and then came down and was the appoint, one of the appointees here for the town of Falmouth in the Cape and the Islands. So I'm not sure as far as what the time constraints are. I'm flexible as far as in my job that I can, you know, attend the meetings. I didn't really do homework on as far as what specifically. What we did with the city of Brockton, the parks and the golf committee were joined. So we reviewed budgets. We raised fees, unfortunately, when they had to be. So I was able to do that, read budgets. What we did, one thing ideally I'd love to see at some course is to have caddies come back to the city. And I think that would be something great for the town of Falmouth, to utilize the students at the high school. But, you know, that's something as far as, you know, in discussion. And I know as far as insurance liability is always a factor and many other things and stuff like that. But it just, the position was open and I thought I would apply for it.
Doug?
Two questions, maybe to elaborate a little bit more on why the Golf Advisory Committee as opposed to other committees, as to whether you're a golfer or not a golfer.
Well, I'm a golfer.
You are a golfer.
Yeah, I kind of quit my daytime job as a nurse, but have had a couple of holes in one. So, you know, I'm also a member over at Falmouth Country Club. So...
The second question is, was the Brockton course a municipally-run course or was it leased out to a...
No, it was municipally-run.
So run by, it was run by the town?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Becky?
I was quite interested to see the amount of work that you did in Brockton. And I do know that course. And I think you did a very good job while you were, while you were living in Brockton and participated in that. So I know a little bit about your background. And I'm very pleased to see that you would step forward and volunteer in Falmouth.
Well, thank you very much. I feel I would be able to be an asset to the town. I really want to get back. I'm actually looking to, to work down in, over here on the bridge, rather than commuting to Boston every day. So, you know, my heart is here with, with my husband. You know, we know Becky from Brockton. Actually, my brother, she, she was my brother's boss as the shop steward, as a teacher. So he was a teacher in Brockton and know her, know her family, her daughter. So I, you know, I give 110%. And I just thought the position was open and I'd like to apply for it, if it'd be considered.
Go ahead, Sam.
Barbara, do you have any experiences from your Brockton golfing and participating in their advisory committee, in that function at least, that you think might be useful to participating in the Falmouth Golf Advisory Committee?
Well, as I said, we had to, the manager would have to answer to the commission. So it was in a, there were six commission members. I was the only female commission member that was appointed by the mayor and was recommended by, the state senator Bobby Creed had recommended me for the position. I think probably just because of my commitment in the city. I enjoy the sport, know a lot about golf. And, you know, clearly, I, you know, I think I would be an asset, bring different ideas, like to see as far as you could build revenue, which is also helpful for the town itself, and listen with other commission members of, you know, what they've tried, what they haven't, you know, kind of thinking outside the box.
I guess I, my question would be, you mentioned that you are a golfer and you have golfed out at Falmouth Country Club.
I have a membership.
You have a membership there?
Yes.
What do you like best about it?
About it? It's an easy walking course, as opposed to a lot of the other courses. So I haven't lost a lot of golf balls here on the course. That's a plus.
That's a plus, right.
The folks who, who work have been very cordial. Anyone that I've seen them as far as interacting. I will go and show up at the course myself and hook up with somebody. I mean, I'm not afraid to, to meet other people. Met a lot of nice people, different ideas, what they'd like to see. Sort of bring that back to the committee. And share some ideas and kind of get folks excited, you know, about using, you know, really utilizing the course.
I happen to be there at, at one of the Golf Advisory Committee meetings. And there were a number of ladies there who play the ladies, the nine, nine, what is it, nine-hole course, I guess. And they were talking about how much, do you play that one or do you play the full 18?
No, because by the time I get home, I mean, I have my clubs in the car all the time. So I haven't been able to make it over there. But, you know, if appointed, definitely I would have to. You know, I'd make the time.
Any other questions? No? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would move the appointment of Barbara Dixon to the Golf Advisory Committee, term ending was at June 30th.
June 30th, 17.
2017.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Proposed unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you, Barbara.
And thank you for applying.
It's good to remember that she makes holes in the mud so you can stay in the clubhouse whenever she's back. All the drinks will be on her.
Okay, we, on the Conservation Commission, we have one applicant who just withdrew today. So we will not have an interview for the Conservation Commission tonight. And the next one is the Energy Committee. The Energy Committee has three positions available. There's one term that ends June 30th, 2016, and two end on June 30th, 2017. And we have one applicant, Christina Rowley. Welcome, Christina.
Thank you.
So I think probably a lot of us are very much aware of your interest in energy, but maybe you could sum it up for us.
Sure. Again, for the records, I'm Christina Rowley and I live on Fay Road. And I have been, I have been a Falmite for now many decades, living both full-time here and also on a seasonal basis at other times. But I have a young son who, well, he was young when we moved. Well, he's over 50. So, so I've had a long-term relationship with many parts of Falmouth, people in, across the town. And I have had a long-term commitment to, to renewable energy, to the environment, and to the health and welfare of our dear citizens of the town. And so when we first moved back here, I'd say we were, we were, you know, summer residents for a while during a time when our professional jobs brought us to many places in the world. My particular work in Africa, Asia, and South Asia involved training and research in, in how people relate to their environment, to their particular places on the planet, and especially for girls and women, and how they are able to work under the most difficult conditions of any place on this planet. It is, was a very challenging positions that I held there. And I worked for some very large corporations, very large nonprofits and for-profit organizations, and also very small organizations. So I have a lot of experience from the bottom up, top down, in between. And, and so I like that. I like the challenge of working, of working, especially at this time in history, when we are, you know, just beginning to realize some of the real struggles that we have before us, the challenges before us, as we try to move toward... before us and challenges before us as we try to move toward sustainability in this town and all over the planet. I mean, we're not alone in our struggles and in fact, our struggles are a lot easier than mo, many other places on the planet. And, uh, and after traveling so many, for so many years and for far-reaching places, I'm really enjoying being back here, being back in Falmouth. And we, and for the last seven years, since 2007, I've been working closely with the Falmouth Climate Action Team and also other organizations, Cape and Islands Self-Reliance and Cape and Islands Renewable Energy. And so I also have, have, have had experience in other parts of the Cape. Very similar, with some very similar conditions, of course. So now I, after working at the grassroots level, so to speak, and have, have, have learned a lot from that, I, I would like very much to be part of the Energy Committee. I have respected so many of the people on the Energy Committee. I, I believe that, uh, that there has been a lot learned from our experiences, especially in the last five years. And I think that we are also ahead of most of, most towns. And I, I, I really, knowing that, I also know that there is so much more for us to do. And there, these years, 2015, uh, you know, 2014 ended with the most phenomenal showing of, uh, support for action on climate change to 400,000 people on the streets of, of New York. Many people, I don't know, by the way, if you know how many people from Falmouth went to that, to that march. I was on that march and I helped bring about 35, uh, students from across Cape Cod and the islands on a bus to go to the march. And they, and we all went together. We, we filled two buses, uh, to go to the march. And, uh, and it was, it was very, very uplifting to be in the, among 400,000 people, all thinking the same mind, with the same mindsets and kids on the streets, actually playing on the streets. These, these young kids who had their chalk in their hands and they were drawing pictures of all sorts of environmental, um, situations. And, uh, and then, and then all of the musicians, all of the color of it all, uh, it was, it was wonderful. And I, and so I'm, I'm feeling very inspired these days. And I'm very happy to be where I am and I would like very much to work with the committee.
Questions for Christina, so?
Sure. I'm the liaison for energy. Super happy to see someone with your experience applying. I see the chair is here and I, I'm just curious, off the top of your head, what are the three most important things you're excited to work with the, the chair and the rest of the committee on coming in, if you're brought in as the next person?
Uh-huh. Yeah, I, I think that, you know, I think that one of the most important issues to focus on is, uh, energy efficiency. This, uh, this town is also doing a lot of work, I think, coming forward and, I mean, currently, uh, on solar, uh, applications. And, uh, and I, and I think that, that there is, there is more to come on that. And I also think that there is more, um, uh, applications, uh, on energy efficiency on the, in the town buildings. I'm, I'm, I'm interested to get an update on that. I think that Paul Gentile is going to give an update on that tomorrow night, uh, at the Energy Committee meeting. So I, I really think that there are so many things to work on and the most important is to increase our energy efficiency.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? No? Okay. Thank you Christina.
Thank you.
I would move approval of appointing Christina Rowley to the Energy Committee. Dates as to when that term ends?
June 30th.
June 30th, 2017.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Right. Thank you, thank you for applying. We're thrilled to have you. And the next interview is with Board of Appeals and John Sutherland. Is he here? Yes, there he is. Good evening, Mr. Sutherland. You provided us with an application and a resume and I thank you very much. So you can start by telling us of your interest in the ZBA, the very important regulatory board.
Yes, it is. My name is Joan Sutherland. Live on Gifford Street. My wife and I moved to Falmouth four and a half years ago. My first exposure to the zoning board of appeals was as a, I guess, a witness for, for the defense. We, um, found ourselves at, at several meetings, um, trying to work things out with the developer in, in the direction that, that our development was, was going to take. I was very impressed with, um, the thoroughness and the amount of thought that went into all the discussions that went on at those several meetings. And, uh, so that, that was my, my first exposure to the zoning board and I was very favorably impressed with how they, uh, did their business. Right now, I am also working, uh, as a job cost accountant with a developer up on, in Norwell. So I'm an accountant by, by trade, partially retired, which gives me the time to devote to, to the committee. And I think bringing my accounting background to it and especially, um, my new involvement with job costing may in some circumstances be of value to the committee. And I can work with the numbers and if they need some careful examination in some cases, then I'm prepared to do that. My, my wife has found it very enjoyable working in, in town since, since we moved here and she highly recommends to me that I get involved in any way that I can.
That's pretty obvious.
So I, uh, it was suggested to me by one of the board members that I apply. I had been thinking about it casually, but, um, with his prodding, I went ahead and filled out my application.
Okay, questions, Doug?
Mr. Sutherland and I were both at the last zoning board of appeals meeting and so I know he has seen the way that board works and also how long their hours can be deliberating on certain topics. And what you've applied for is an alternate position and then there are a few issues with that. One is that there is a possibility of becoming a permanent position. If we have an opening, would you still be willing to be moved up to that level if you are an alternate?
Yes, very much so.
And the second is if, and I believe this is one board where if a member is absent, you would be filling in for that member and then you need to be there available when that issue gets continued, gets be brought up because it has to be heard by the same members that started it. And so it's a, can be a time commitment that is substantial or just as substantial whether you're an alternate or a full, a permanent member.
I understand that.
Okay.
I wanted to ask about the alternate position and, and what you thought of that. But I like that bottom line that you had. Sometimes it's just a good New England common sense.
Never hurts.
Any other questions? No?
Considerable gratitude, I would like to nominate Mr. Sutherland to the zoning board of appeals for term, for the alternate position, term ending June 30th, 2019.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Thank you so much for applying.
Thank you.
Very pleased.
Good for an happy year appointment.
You may notice that, um, I, I added two items to the agenda tonight under licenses. We received today, um, two applications for one-day liquor licenses that, um, that they want to be exercised before our next meeting. So it was either take them up tonight or not. And under the open meeting law, the chairman can, uh, when it, when it presents itself to include it in the agenda, and the agenda was revised earlier this morning to show the additions to the agenda. So the first is an application for a one-day liquor license at Highfield, uh, Highfield Hall on July, I mean, on January 16th, 2015 and January 17th, 2015. These are from on behalf of Encore. It's an Encore wine tasting on Friday and the other is a newcomer's wine tasting on Saturday. And these are both organizations, um, under the newcomer's umbrella. And the, so the approval would come with, pending the approval from the police department if, if you agree to consider these and approve this one, the first one.
And the organizations you said are by the newcomers?
The newcomers. The first is the newcomers and, and they're being held at Highfield. They're a wine tasting by the newcomers, by both branches, the newcomers and the Encore, which is the other branch of newcomers, on two different nights.
I would move approval of the two one-day liquor licenses for January 15th and January, January 16th and January 17th.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. And the, the second request for a one-day liquor license is for the Falmouth Theater Guild and that is on January 30th and February 6th of 2015. And this is two special one-day liquor licenses for theater performances to be held at 58 Highfield Drive on Friday, January 30th and Friday, February 6th.
I have approval of the, uh, one day, two one-day liquor licenses on January 30th and February 6th for the Falmouth Theater Guild.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Okay, now we'll move to administrative orders. And the first is, um, is to accept a donation from the Falmouth Road Race to the Falmouth Police Department for portable surveillance equipment. Um, is there somebody? Is the chief here? This is pretty interesting equipment, I must say.
Yes, indeed. Could be a nice asset.
Yes. In the amount of $86,000. Chief?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. We read with great interest your proposal here.
Well, thank you. But there was, this couldn't be done without, you know, the great partnership with the Falmouth Road Race. Do you all have photographs of what this looks like?
Yes.
We do.
We do.
I first saw this at a chief's conference in Philadelphia. Um, it was the International Chief's Conference and it was over 14,000 chiefs there and I had an opportunity to speak with the commissioner. And it's a piece of equipment that, uh, they own, two of them. And it's been used in great success to prevent as well as solve crimes. And when speaking with Carl Kavosor at one point, um, about what the Road Race Committee could do for us, I really gave it a lot of thought. And, um, I thought this was the way to go for a piece of equipment that will benefit the community, our visitors. And the nice thing about it is, uh, it can be used for the road race, for any large event. And that's what I thought was really great about the Road Race Committee and the board of directors is that they're not selfish, they're thinking about the town of Falmouth, thinking about the communities and all the events that we have between the Fourth of July, Main Street Fair and things like that. And this, this is some great technology.
Maybe you could describe just a little bit what this is?
Yeah, this is a, uh, this is a modal, a mobile surveillance system. It's a, it's a trailer about the size of our speed trailers. You're all familiar with our speed trailers that we have in town. It's about that size and it has a telescoping pole on it. It'll go up to 36 feet. Uh, at the top of the pole, there are four cameras. Yeah, it also has a PA system that we can operate remotely. Uh, and it's work, works through wifi and a cellular system. So this can be fed back to the police department and we can monitor. Uh, it records. Uh, it's just another set of eyes. Uh, again, like I say, uh, it's a tool, another tool in the toolbox that may prevent something from happening if somebody sees it, as well as documenting. Uh, and that was one of my pieces that you saw in the letter that I wrote to the, uh, Road Race Committee. You know, with, with some of the recent events that have happened in the world, uh, even just recently in Paris, they caught it all on video. Falmouth is a great community, but a lot of our businesses, their cameras are inside their stores. So most of the time when we do have a crime or an incident, we do search out for video. This is just one more tool that we'll have to be able to place. Uh, even just during the summer on a nice weekend, we could park it on Main Street and, uh, it's just one more set of eyes that we have to keep everybody safe.
Can you give us an idea of what area it can cover? I know it can either go up 26 feet or 30 feet, but?
You can zoom it out to a half a mile.
Really? So radius of?
Yes, and some of the cameras are infrared, so it works at night. Uh, cause I was thinking about when we have the, uh, the movies at Penguin and Park at night, set it up down there with all the kids running around and things like that.
Does it circulate around or does it just stay in one direction?
You can set the cameras up.
Rotate us.
So you can rotate it and you can zoom in remotely. So from the police station or from my, my iPhone, if we wanted to see a particular plate or something that was going on. If you saw something over in the corner, somebody gathering or doing something, you may be able to zoom in on that.
It could also be set up to record as opposed to just live?
It records or just live, yes.
Big Brother.
Well, well, that's true in a way, but?
Well, as, if you, if you look at what's going on in the world today, yes, it is. But it's necessary. Uh, they would not have caught the Boston Marathon bombers if they had not been for video.
So?
Um, just with respect to the, you know, the Big Brother aspect, I really like this in terms of a, um, drug crime deterrent. I mean, you never know where this could be. I also think, you know, you could maybe, you know, in terms of the fire department might need some assistance. I mean, and I, I really, the presentation was really incredible. I can see why the committee was persuaded. I mean, you, you really did terrific research and it was really, you know, really well put together in terms of getting the, the donation. So it was really good partnership.
And like I say, you know, they were good partners. They're thinking beyond just their events.
Becky?
I was just thinking on those same lines, um, and it isn't just the large activities that are in the town. You can take this piece of equipment into other parts of town that you have some suspicion about or something that you've been told, or is it just for that activities?
Think outside the box. It can be used anywhere.
Okay.
And we will use it as we use our speed signs, as we use our, you know, electronic signs and things like that. This is just another tool in our toolbox.
Good.
But not one that we could afford without the, the Road Race Committee.
I want to recognize too Carl Kavosor and Karen Bissonette from the Road Race Committee. You know, a very special group, pardon me, that does very special things for the town. So we really appreciate your, your constant engagement in, in helping the town get things accomplished.
Thank you. The entire board wanting to be here tonight.
Carl?
On behalf of the entire board, Karen and I came. Some of the board, as you know, is not local and, uh, you know, busy with other things. Scott Kelfi here in Falmouth. Scott Gelfi here in Falmouth, and Bob Antonucci, Jeff Cutter, Jeff Nickerson, Don Attashie, and of course, the president, Scott Gelfi. Karen, the chief really did a good job. We looked at a lot of things, we wanted to put cameras down at the heights, and we thought, you know, we're going to pay for some sort of camera system at the heights that they could use year-round. And the chief said, you know, we'll be looking at seagulls all winter, you know, these things are going to be, nobody's there. You know, so he came up with this idea, and the Road Race got behind it, and thought it was a great thing for the Fourth of July, and, you know, maybe just surveillance-type stuff. So, you know, we've done some stuff for the fire department, and now the police department, you know, it is a community race, and we want to give back to the community. So I think it's important that, you know, every year we try to find some project, you know, we want to, we're looking to do some stuff with the field, you know, when that didn't go through, and the community didn't think that was a good idea, this was next on the list.
Great.
We hopefully will accept it, you know, for the chief.
Great. Thank you very much. So are there any other questions for the chief, or?
I would move to accept the donation from the Falmouth Road Race, the Falmouth Police Department, for the portable surveillance equipment with gratitude.
Second.
To the Race Committee.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
The second, the next item we have under administrative orders is to approve the request to apply for a county grant in the amount of $5,000 for shellfish propagation. I think you've probably had an opportunity. Pardon? Oh, Matt, yes, please. Say a few words, say a few words.
Matt Weeks, I'm the fisheries technician for the town, and the one that filled out this application. So I'm just looking for y'all's blessing, I guess, to send it in. It's for $5,000, and the town would match $6,000 in-kind contribution, also my time and votes. It's for a predator reduction project in Green Pond, specifically for the green crab. It's invasive species, and green crabs are dominant predator. And it's to help protect, we have a natural set of soft-shelled clams this year seed, and it's likely to be wiped out by the green crabs. We're hoping to put out 100 traps to try to reduce the population, so... So the funds would fund 90 traps, and we'd hire a commercial fisherman to tend them once a week.
So you mentioned, you were mentioning the amount of seed that you're going to purchase this year. What is that, do you know just yet?
Well, the, this isn't really for seed, it's just for the gear.
No, I know the grant is different. I was just, I was going off topic a little bit.
Oh, yeah, we grow four and a half, four and a half million colhogs over here.
Four and a half million?
And we'll probably do two or three million oysters as well.
Now, does some of that seed go into, into Green Pond?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
So this, this project will help retain that?
Yes, it will also help protect the colog seed that we're planting as well. But we don't, we don't grow, currently grow soft-shelled clam seed, so this is trying to take advantage of that resource, that natural resource there.
And to ask the brutally cold question, so after the crabs are caught, they put in the freezer to kill them, and then...
Don't say that.
It's what happens to them.
I know.
And then what happens to them?
Well, we'll utilize them the best we can. Last year, we did a kind of a liability study, I did 14 traps in the pond, we're catching about 1,000 crabs a week.
Wow.
And I was giving them to the charter boats, mostly as bait.
Okay.
And give them to the bait shops and stuff, whoever needed them.
That's good.
We're getting bait from the charter boats, so we're just exchanging bait for...
One way or another. Great.
Okay.
And you don't expect there to be any additional funds that need to be replaced? If we get the money, are we incurring a future cost for this? This is one thing the finance committee always wants us, to make sure that when we apply for grants, we are not then ensuring that we have future costs.
No, you have, you have some traps that'll last you 15 years, and you can use them for all the ponds after that.
Okay.
I would move to approve the request to apply for the county grant, in the amount of $5,000, for not really shellfish propagation, but for elimination of the green crabs so that we can propagate shellfish better.
Second. Let's be straightforward about it, huh? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Matt, thanks for being here. The next item is the very first step in following up with the request to, to accept White Pine Lane as a public road. And the very first step in that is the road layout. And the owners of the property have provided us with a layout, a road layout tonight, and if I can find it here. So our vote will come, just to, as a, our role will be, our intention to lay out White Pine Lane and refer this to the planning board so that the next steps can take place. It's pretty straightforward. They hired an engineer to complete the plan according to the town's requirements, and I think it is all in order. Mr. Jones?
Either Heather or Julian, would you just remind us, or remind the public, what now happens? That we refer to the planning board, it's still a fairly lengthy process, we're not going to be building the road next week now, it's...
I can over, give you a brief overview. One, I can report that the town engineer has reviewed the layout plan, and it meets all the town's requirements. That plan is in the hands of the planning department now, so it will be referred, they will then schedule a public hearing with the planning board, or it will appear on their agenda, I'm not sure it's a public hearing. The planning board will then discuss the proposal and give its feedback to this board. Following that, the board will post a public hearing about the layout of White Pine Lane and the prospective betterment. That hearing notice will be sent to all of the residents abutting the layout, which will be from Lake Shore Drive to Sandwich Road, every resident along that way will be notified if the board's intent to lay out White Pine Lane and to assess a betterment. And at that hearing, the board will then discuss both of those issues, they're separate statutes, but you have one hearing that addresses both of those issues. Following the board's vote on both the layout and the betterment, you then recommend a town meeting next, or February 2nd, I think you'll have the articles for the warrant for the town meeting. You'll have two articles on the warrant. The first article will be to raise or to appropriate the funds necessary to approve White Pine Lane, and the second article will be to lay out White Pine Lane. And then once town meeting authorizes that, then you give the direction to the Department of Public Works, and they schedule the project probably next fall for construction. There may be some things they can do earlier, but they may not commence work right away. I don't know, I can't commit their schedule, but they would begin work.
And the betterment could go either direction. It could be 100% on the property owners, zero town, 100% town, zero town owners, or somewhere in the middle.
Correct. And just to, I just want to clarify that the appropriation will be for the full value.
Right.
It's only what the homeowners are required to pay back over 10 to 20 years would be the share.
I would move to vote our intention to lay out White Pine Lane and refer the layout to the planning board.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Briefly.
It is, I just want to thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's been an incredible journey from November, and I want to thank you, and Chairman, and Ms. Harper, for meeting with me, and the town meeting members, and all of you. I thank you so much.
You're on your way, John.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, now, the last item under this, on administrative orders, is to approve a town EDIC grant...
Thirty-day extension first.
Did I miss something? Oh, sorry. Authorize a 30-day extension of the contract with Science Wares. This is for wastewater, this is a consultant, and they've just requested another 30 days. I think if we do this, and after that, there will be another RFP. So a motion to approve a 30-day extension.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Now the EDIC. I did provide, I did send out today, I think, or it's in your packets, the actual memo that we received from the Cape Cod Commission back on December 18th. And I happened to find it yesterday as I was going through some things, and I said, how did I ever miss that? But anyway, there's...
Michael Lasso's here.
Yes, there's a lot of good information in here. And I think we have the, a proposed motion. And we're going to make the motion and discuss it, and then, Michael, if you want to comment. So this is the suggested motion that we make on this, because it is, the, the request is due by Thursday, and today is Monday, so we don't have a whole lot of time. These are DLS, these are Division of Local Services funds that the state makes available to the commission, the Cape Cod Commission. The Cape Cod Commission is what's called an MPO, the Municipal Planning Organization for the Cape. Every single city in town in Massachusetts is a member of an MPO, somewhere, everywhere. Prior to the Cape Cod Commission, the Cape was, the MPO, I think comprised Plymouth and Fall River and New Bedford, it was more than just the Cape. And when the Cape Cod Commission Act was enacted in 1990, or '88, I guess it was, the commission was designated as the MPO for Cape Cod, because every single city in town has to be part of an MPO. So if you are part of an MPO, then these Department of Local Service grants become available from the state periodically. And we became aware of those grants recently, and the idea is to try to see how we can, if we can come together with some thoughts, be able to access some of those funding. So if you would just read the motion, and we can discuss the motion.
I would move that the board of selectmen endorse the application of the town and the EDIC for DLTA funding, with the condition that contract and scope of work approved by the Cape Cod Commission and scope of work proposed consulting services are approved by vote of the planning board, the board of selectmen, and EDIC, and to authorize the town manager to revise the letter of intent, as may be needed prior to the deadline of January 15th, 2015.
Okay. Questions about the, okay. Questions about, do you want to make any comments on the motion, anyone? I think it's pretty clear, what we need to do is to, affordable housing is, is engaged in by a number of boards and committees, as we all know. The planning board, the ZBA, the EDIC, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Housing Authority, the Housing Trust. I mean, there are a lot of entities in towns that get involved in housing. And so the idea is, we're working now very hard to try to coalesce this, and try to bring these groups together with, so we all have the same aims and goals, and we're not, you know, working against each other. So I think that motion will help us, at least, and if accessing these funds are possible, do it as a kind of united approach here. That's, would you say it? That's what we're after? Okay.
And I, the thing that's amazing is, with this proposal, you know, we're taking it the next step in terms of where the consultant suggested. And I, you know, I really want to commend Michael Lasso, who I know is going to get up in a minute, to really catch the wave here, and to recognize this as a possible opportunity, and to, you know, try to contact all the stakeholders in a very, very quick amount of time. I mean, this was, you really had to pull the trigger on this very quickly, and for all of those interested parties to get on board with this possible next step, I think, was really important. And while at the same time, a lot is already happening with planning, for example, and with these, you know, the other boards. So I just think this is a really good time for the town to take a serious look at the housing issue from every perspective, and that's, you know, this potential grant will be the next step here on, on the committee's end.
And there was a very interesting editorial in the Cape Cod Times today about Truro. Was it today? Yes, anyway, I think it was today. Yeah, today or yesterday? That, for instance, Truro has only met about 2% of its affordable housing needs, because it is so small, and the terrain is what it is. It simply can't get to 10%. There is no way. Some of the smaller towns on the Cape simply can't do it. And even though they have constructed some affordable housing, and they had a picture of it in the paper today in Truro, and they were pretty nice affordable housing units, there's no way that can happen. So there, the push has now become, we really have to have a much more regional approach to how we're going to deal with affordable housing. The towns really, no matter how big they are, they have the capacity to be able to do this and have it be fair, and have people be able to live where they need to live, and where the jobs are, which is, are so tied into affordable housing. I mean, you can have affordable housing, but there aren't any jobs, there won't be anybody necessarily living there that's in the job market, so...
And just to add a quick point before it comes up, and this is about housing generally.
Mm-hmm.
It's not, affordable housing is perfect, but this is about all housing. It's about housing for, you know, the people that are here, young, old, you know, people, you know, young professionals coming in to look for jobs that, you know, you know, folks in the chamber may want to hire them. So this, this is so comprehensive.
Okay, Michael, you'd like to say something?
Yes, thank you very much. Michael Lasso, the chairman of the Falmouth EDIC. And as you were saying, housing is very important today in the development of our community, so that's why the EDIC is involved in this. And this grant opportunity came up rather quickly during the holidays. We saw that it was associated, one of the categories in order to apply was for housing. And that's an important category for this community. So we put together the draft, which I think you may have a copy in front of you. We've actually passed that through the Cape Cod Commission staff for a clever review, and they saw that it met all the requirements to apply in a very short time schedule. So I really appreciate the work of everyone here this evening in moving this forward. And the EDIC board will be voting on it tomorrow morning.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sam?
I'm the liaison for the Community Preservation Commission, and of course, they're funding some, you know, affordable housing, the pieces of this. But trying to get my arms around all of the different agencies that provide those services has been a real struggle for me, and I'm not there, I don't even... So to be able to see us kind of comprehensive, look at all of our housing needs, and maybe identify some of the key players in it, would be a very valuable, I think, service to a lot of us. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. Okay, now the next section, the next section of our agenda are special events, and these are recurring events. These have already been reviewed by the Special Events Committee, and we have their recommendations. And so what I'm going to do is, I'm just going to read through them, and if you wish to hold any one of them for comment, you can hold them, otherwise we will just approve them. I'm going to ask...
As recommended, or as?
As recommended.
Okay.
I mean, and if you want to have a discussion on it, then ask to hold it. Otherwise, we will just approve them as recommended. I want to ask that you hold number four, because there's been a change in the hours since it was approved by the committee. And the last one is number 14, which is a wedding, and I want us to be very much aware of some of the restrictions on the applicants in terms of parking. So we'll just go through, and if you wish to hold, just say so. The Falmouth Farmers Market, Thursday, May 21st to October 8th. The Falmouth... Hold it?
I guess I'm a little unclear as to what, because do we have the recommendation per each of these, or is it on what the application?
It's all, wait, it's all in the files?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe we do.
Yeah, it's all in there, it took hours to read it. I know that, it got dark very quickly. Okay, next is the Falmouth Art Market, Gus Candy Lawn, Thursdays, July and August. The Stryper Fest, Marine Park Banshee, Saturday, 9/26/15. We're going to hold four. Five is the Annual Plant Sale, Town Hall Square, Saturday, May 9th, 2015.
On that one, there was also a request for the, a fee waiver. We're not discussing that right now, this is just on the application of the permit, is that correct?
That's correct. Number six, the Walk, MS Falmouth, Mullen Hall School, Surf Drive Beach, Sunday, September 27th, 2015. The Third Annual Falmouth June Jog, Falmouth Heights Beach, Sunday, June 7th, 2015. Eight is the 38th Annual Seagull Six Spring Classic Road Race, Water Street, Woods Hole, March 29th, 2015. Nine, Arts... Nine, Arts Alive, Library Lawn and Shore Street Extension, Friday to Sunday, June 19th to June 21st, 2015, and the Jazz Stroll at Peg Noonan Park on Friday, October 2nd, 2015. The Cultural Survival Bazaar, Marina Park, Friday, Sunday, June 7th to June 19th, 2015, July 17th to July 19th, 2015. Now, the next one, all right, we'll stop there, because these are recurring, and then we'll come back to the new. Okay, so the first one that was held was the Falmouth Farmers Market.
Do we want to remove the other approvals?
Yes, thank you, yes.
So I would remove approval of items two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine?
Second.
And ten?
And ten.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Okay, now, back to the first hold. Who held it?
I held it because I'm, you know, I really see a lot of people here from the Farmers Market, and I know this is a change, was recommended by the committee-
The working group, while following the board's policy.
Exactly. And so I just wanted to maybe speak to that process.
Sure. First, I'd like to recognize that many professional staff that participate in that, I think you all are aware, that includes representation from the Police Department, Fire Department, Beach Department, Harbor Masters Department, the Recreation Director, Diane Davidson, who does a phenomenal job on a very high-volume of materials for that meeting in production, Parks Department, Highway Department. I may not be hitting everyone, but just so you get a sense of the type of staff effort and thought that goes into the review of all the applications, even those that just went very smoothly, had a fairly rigorous discussion before that review. And I did prepare a memorandum, which you all have, which I've shared with the Farmers Market particularly, that covers two different issues, on the first being the proposed location of the Farmers Market. And then, on the second page, you'll see that we've recommended an increase in the bond, and going to assume by your votes on the, those items. And this is unrelated to the Farmers Market. We're recommending an increase on the bond for large events at Marina Park, particularly the Stryper Fest and the reunions of summers past. And those are because they really are heavily intense use of the grounds, and we have a $300 bond currently, and the, doesn't cover the costs to make any repairs. And both those groups were asked about that and supported that readily during our discussion. You don't need to vote it, I just felt it was worth mentioning as one of the other items. In terms of the two locations, the Farmers Market did meet with us several months ago. We asked them to come back with a little bit more information about their preferred site, which is the Peg Noonan Park, where they've been for the last several years, and then to come back with an alternative site. And to their credit, came back with a very viable alternative site that meets the board's policy. You have a copy of the board's policy for special consideration, that asked the staff to consider avoiding the use of areas of our Main Streets during the months of June, July, and August, and to take very careful consideration of those events. We spent a tremendous amount of time evaluating the two mitigation factors, and those were, I was really excited. We might not agree, we might need to grab that, otherwise, we'll have-
Yeah, we'll just-
...
Okay.
That the proposed site proposed some mitigation alternatives, including the use of a petty cab program. We spent a lot of time, a month ago, speaking about that, learned more about it at the last Working Groups meeting, as well as moving the vendor and market operators' parking to the Lawrence School, which would remove 21 to 25 vehicles at peak from Main Street off to an alternate location. But we were unable to determine and affirm that there would be a reduction in the traffic impacts downtown that would meet the board's policy. In fact, the Police Department specifically requests that the site be the alternative proposed location, which is Marina Park. I mean, there was a good discussion about Marina Park. The area in Marina Park, and you don't have a plan, I'm sorry, in front of you, but it is further, not where the Banshee is, but further down in front of the harbor, closer to the-
Flying Bridge.
Flying Bridge, thank you. So it's a shadier area. The group felt it was more conducive to the type of environment. They wanted to have an event. They've agreed to have their vendor parking, as well as operator parking at the Gus Cante Center with placards, and that prefer the alternate location meets the board's policy. So it was a vote of the board to recommend Marina Park for the Farmers Market.
Thank you. I just really wanted to publicize this incredible process, that, as you started with, had so many people involved. You know, there's been a tremendous amount of written communication, and I think the directors of the board for the Farmers Market really did a terrific job of responding to all of the questions that were asked of them. And so I really wanted, that was the reason for my hold. I, you know, I just wanted there to be an opportunity for folks at home, or, you know, watching F C TV and here, to really, to really hear about the process. I appreciate that.
Doug?
I would hope we go ahead with the recommendation, that we find some way of reaching out to the Farmers Market, expressing our support for the existence of the Farmers Market, whether it's that we can say this is going to be a, they don't have to do, that we are going to make this change, and then there's no more fight. That we're not going to, next year, they're not going to come back to us and say, we'd like to do it again, we're now here, and they have to go through a whole process and deal with it. Or whether we can make sure we're open to a reduction of permit fee, that if we do go the recommendation, that we can appear in some way really showing how much we do value having the Farmers Market in town. And I'm not sure exactly how to do that, but.
Well, one of the things that was mentioned that stuck out to me was, there, you know, they've done some research about kind of the uphill climb if it moves, even if it moves to a terrific waterfront location. And there's been a request for additional signage. You know, I think if they move to the waterfront location, they will sort of be, you know, the star, sort of the leader for the revitalization as we move east, all the way down Main Street. And, you know, that's what impressed me about their responses in terms of looking at both locations, you know, the increased signage, increased publicity, and I think that was part of the request, if they do go to the Marina.
Sam?
I might say that, now, while this didn't enter into the recommendation process, but with the art market now being at Gus Cante, all of a sudden, now, you've got two ongoing events that are occurring on the same day, that are very complementary to each other. And I think, to a great extent, may forward our goal of trying to move the activity, you know, eastward along Main Street, and really enhancing the business opportunities in that area as well. I think that the efforts that Peter McCarnady has made to try to make events held at the Gus Cante Recreation Center a little more tractable from a traffic standpoint, of making the flow of traffic one way into the parking lot off of Main Street, and then exiting out the back, past the football field, as it is now on Dillingham, makes a lot of sense, and will help to mitigate the traffic issues that we're going to have there at the intersection of Grant and Scranton Avenue, excuse me, and Main Street. So there are a lot of neat things that kind of falling together here, none of which was really thought about in making this recommendation, but which begin to complement each other. And I think maybe will draw a lot more business for both events.
Becky?
I want to talk to the Falmouth Market members. Since this conversation has started, and I have said-
Becky, this is a board discussion? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Since, I want to talk about, since the very first time of talking to the Falmouth Market members, I am saying it is a valuable activity that happens in your town, and I'm very, very pleased that it's here. And this changed a lot of things in my mind. When we had that meeting with the Planning Board, and we started to talk about what was going to happen from the common going all the way up through T-Ticket, and it was to make everything look more green and not so concrete. And that really has stuck in my head, in thinking about the beauty of Falmouth, and thinking about how we want to preserve that look, that we are after, and we've got it, but we need a little more. I mean, we always need more. But it's the idea of moving things down the street, or up the street, whatever direction that is. And with Farmer's Market, I thought that if that moved up to the Gus Cante, and the town was going to make all of the different changes, and the traffic change and all of that, it would have been a perfect spot. But since they didn't apply for it, and they wanted to go over to Marina Park, but they really wanted to be at Peg Noonan Park, was the traffic issue, and I am still on that end of town and developing that. And I went on the Internet today to see what other places, and how many Farmers Markets there are on the Cape, and to see what kind of products they sell, and how long they open. Farmers Markets are in all types of buildings and outdoors. Many of them on the Cape have a lot of parking, either in front or behind. The one that is in Barnes Falls at the courthouse, and you've got all of that parking that is there. So when I looked at each one of them, I kept coming back to Falmouth and saying, it's a parking issue, it's Main Street, and we're moving things up. And when the art, what's the other name, for the art group that is-
Art Market.
Art Market.
When they readily accepted going up to Gus Cante, is the beginning of that, it's going to start now. So I really am pleased that the consideration from the Special Events Group was not recommending Peg Noonan, and when that was coming from the Police Department and coming from traffic, that going over to Marina Park is a beautiful spot, and it's shady. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention too, on the, just because it's a Farmers Market, I attended a ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago, early January, for the first annual Orleans Winters Farmers Market. And it was a cold, you know, it was right after Christmas, and it was their, the opening day of their first winter market. And it was held in a very large room, about three times the size of this room, at the Nossett Middle School. And I thought I would just, and I can't tell you how many vendors there were in the room, so, so many, that people, you know, people who just made their own crafts, or their own gardens, you know, their vegetables and fruits, and, well, not so much fruits, but vegetables, all sorts of things. And I probably spent two hours there. It was just so interesting. It was inside, so you weren't cold, and it was in the winter, but still, it was able to be very, very successful. And on the other side of the school, where all the students selling their Christmas wreaths, you know, for some kind of a fundraiser, I guess, for the school. So I appreciate all the comments. Any other comments from the board? Sam?
I make one more. I know that there are an awful lot of residents in Falmouth that actually shun going to the downtown of Main Street during the summertime because of the traffic. One attractive thing about, excuse me, about Marina Park is that you can get there from Woods Hole by coming up Surf Drive, Clinton, and then on to Scranton, and avoid Main Street and Falmouth. And you can come at it from the north, you know, by coming down Davis Straits and turning on to either Falmouth Heights Road, and then sneaking across at the top of the Harper, or going straight to Scranton Avenue, opposite the rec center, and turn it down. So really, from an attractiveness from people throughout Falmouth coming to that event, there's a traffic benefit, I think, in a way, of being able to feed into the Farmers Market from different places, without having to go through the congestion of that downtown Main Street area in the middle of the summer, when all those tourists are down, they're walking up and down Main Street. So I sure hope this works out well for the art market that didn't have a chance to actually hold their events this summer, this past summer, but also for the Farmers Market, if we do vote it to be at Marina Park.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. We don't, there is no public comment, but I do want to thank you for coming, and I hope you take all the very positive comments very well. Okay, number four, reunion of summers past, the Marina Park. The one thing I wanted to mention about this is a change in the hours. If you will look, they, their functions were ending at 10, and now they're going to end them at 9, because there had been some complaints about noise, and so they're going to end the, they're going to lower the volume level of the music so that it isn't so loud, they're going to cease alcohol sales at 8:30, and they're going to end the function at 9 o'clock. So those are the changes that we're approving on this one. So is there anything you wanted to say about it?
The only thing I'd say is, it really is another example of the Working Group process working excellently, is we were able to air and vet those issues. The representatives of the organization responded very quickly, and I think this will make a big improvement over-
Yes.
Yeah, I would just say that Rebecca and I both attended this Working Group session, and I, you know, it's fairly done, it draws out the experience, and really, the unique, you know, knowledge that each of the departments brings to this kind of decision process. I'm very impressed with the Working Group's judicious process of handling all of these requests.
Good, that's great. And the last one is number, wait a minute, I guess we have to vote.
So I would move-
Number four.
Of the, number four, the reunion of summers past, with the changes as mentioned for the Times.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. And the last one is the beach wedding of Camise Baird on Menon Beach. The only reason I mention this is that it's at, they want to start at 3:30, and this is like a summer weekend in July, which is not really going to work too well. And I thought that we should recommend to the beach superintendent that he contact them and make sure that it doesn't start till 4:30, because that, by that time, they won't be able to park on the beach at all. I think they're planning buses and some other vehicles, but those vehicles will have to park elsewhere. Just, I think if we approve it with the recommendation that the beach superintendent contact them about the hour and about the fact that there's no parking. Becky?
That was brought up at the meeting.
Oh, it was?
It was, and I believe they felt the same, as you're saying. But I would like to make a comment about our beach department. If you look at the last three names, or the last three that we just voted, 12, 13, and 14, each one of those require assistance for handicap. And because these are on beaches, we have the equipment in Falmouth to provide that for handicapped people who will be the guests of these weddings. And I thought that was such to accommodate one of the, one of the special items, and we have the wheelchairs and everything available for anyone so they can get to the beach for that family wedding. And I think that beach department's to be committed to that.
Thank you for saying that, because that's very true. So a motion to approve item 14?
Well, we're actually 11 and 12, 12 and 13 were the only ones we haven't done.
Oh, we didn't do any? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
And I have a question, when you got your-
Okay, all right. So we're going to, we're going to take up 11, which is Liam McGuire's Irish Pub, Almost Five-Miler, Town Hall Square, Sunday, May 3rd, 2015. The beach wedding, three beach weddings. Porter Driscoll, Menon Beach, Saturday, September 5th, 2015. Blinstrub Wild, Old Silver Beach, Sunday, May 24th, 2015, and Camise Baird at Menon Beach on Saturday, July 18th, 2015.
And so my question is, on the, on the Camise Baird, which was the peak summer, early time, I'd really like to require it to be later, not suggest. I don't know how this works.
Well, actually, I looked at this last one, and it does now say 4:30.
Okay.
It says fourth, wait a minute, no, I'll get to the last one here. It says 4:30.
Okay.
And then, the only thing is, that they, they may have problems with the setup at 4, but they probably won't at 4 o'clock, depending on the day. But it is 4:30 now.
Then Heather had a question.
Heather?
The board, the Working Group, recommended that it may begin only after 4:30, because the beach use policy prevents those activities until after 4:30 in the afternoon. But there'll be no buses or limousines parked in that lot, and it first comes, first serve for parking, and they need to find accommodations in the alternate parking location for the large number of guests staying at the ceremony. So that will all be communicated to the applicant, and the applicant can then decide whether that site meets.
So that'll be in writing, like, okay. Thank you.
Good. Okay, so now a motion to approve 11 through 14.
I'll make the motion to approve 11 through 14, but I did want to comment on 11 also prior to discussion. Just to point out, this is a new event that's being sponsored by the New England Runner Magazine. It's a New England Runner Pub Series. It's a series of eight races, all sponsored around different pubs. It's a Sunday morning race and being pushed very, by three of our longtime Falmouth track people, Courtney Bird, Jack Carroll, and Reste Pelletier, and I'm happy to support it. They're only expecting about 300 to 500 runners for the first time, and I think it's a time where we're not doing a lot of, having any other running races in town, and I think it'll be a good event.
And Heather had a question.
Just one quick comment there. Very cooperative, and we'll make sure that they communicate.
And they are here.
All the runners, that parking on Main Street is prohibited by the runners, they're to use the parking lots of Lawrence School and the Morse Pond School, Mullins School for parking so that the ordinary, you know, breakfast goers have access to parking on Main Street.
I'm glad you singled that out and mentioned it, because it is new, obviously, and it's got a good time of the year, and it's a good course, and it's good guys running it, of course, so it should be a great event. Thank you.
The origin of the name is somewhat of a pun.
Okay, yes.
I think one of the suggestions that was made at the working group review committee, oh, was that you might consider actually doing the registration and starting where people actually park rather than down at Town Hall Square and forcing them to walk down. So in the future, it makes sense to me to like use Lawrence School where everybody can park, register, and then literally start from there rather than having people park there.
Then you have to run across Main Street, though.
Yes, but, but, you know, it just might be just simply simpler for everybody, and you'll have people driving to that location and not driving to one place and then having to be sent to another place to park their cars. So I just, I thought it was a good suggestion to consider.
I'm the bird in PCB. Our thinking on this course was, number one, it is very limited in the traffic, except for one spot, which we'll work out with the police, where we go up around the end of the bike path at Locust Street. The other thing, our, in our thinking about the parking was that, you know, when we were doing the marathon, we would park for the event even though it was on Main Street. We parked over there, and it's a quarter mile walk across the field, and if these guys can run five miles, I can walk a quarter mile. And we'd rather keep the parking as much away from Main Street. Now, you know, you know and I know, there are going to be people that you can put all the signage in the world out there, and they're going to not pay attention. But if we can get 99% of it, or even 90% of it, to park over there, then I think that's fine. That's one of the reasons why, for example, we, we're going to limit access to Town Hall Square initially until about, until the race went off, because the bowling alley opens at 10:00. So by limiting the parking in the beginning, the people who logically go there would be the runners. So if they can't get in, that's fine. Then we just open it up at 9:30 after the runners go, and then the general parking for Main Street and so on works that way. I mean, that's, that was the thinking that we're going through. You know, will there be, you know, everything is a learning experience, so this is a first year. We have a fair amount of experience doing these kinds of things. Will there be an issue? Hopefully not, but, you know, if there is, you work it out. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Do you have any questions?
I don't think so. Thanks, Courtney.
I just have a personal comment. I don't know if I would speak with Heather. On the application, is it ever asked if it's for profit or if it is a nonprofit organization? Do we ever know that?
I don't think we make that distinction on the application.
Do we make any distinction on local and the people who are holding whatever? Do we ever say if they are local people or they're coming in from another state?
That, I think that's something that's developing in the working group. You were at the meeting, and there was an application for a new race that was from an out-of-state group that's in the business of running events, which frankly, this is as well. It's a group that does road races, but there's definitely a local connection as well. So we've begun to take a look at that, and it starts to color our thinking as to whether, you know, is it adding to the community by adding yet another road race that's drawing resources out of the community? And focused on road races as well as events, we've declined events, and this board has declined events at Marina Park that were exclusive use for, say, a wedding reception at Marina Park, because the philosophy is these are public ways and public facilities that are for the use and enjoyment of our community, and that they aren't for private ventures. But we haven't really nailed down on road races.
One more thought, and, well, let me find the name of this race. This is with Liam McGuire.
That's the one we're just discussing.
What we're doing now, I just wasn't saying the name quick enough.
The five mile.
And they would donate the surplus to local charities such as Falmouth Service Center and Around the Table. Now, that gives me an idea that I would really endorse any group when they're using our town, that that's what they're going to do with their profits. And that's my purpose in saying, is it for profit and taken out of the town, or is it nonprofit? So somewhere there are some very good things that happen in the town when the money stays here and is donated.
Okay. Courtney, did you want to say something else?
Just quickly, I'll let this, the original idea for this, we were approached by New England Runner Magazine, and then we went to the track club, because we're active in the Falmouth Track Club, and they were about road raced out. And so we, we said, well, we'll put it on ourselves. And the goal was never, even though we haven't set up a nonprofit or any of that, the goal was never to be in this for making money. The goal, as I said in the beginning, was to stage a good event that would, would be good for runners, that would reflect well on the town, and so on. We're not taking any salary or anything else out of it. And so, God willing, if we make a surplus, that's, the money will go to organizations like the Service Center or Around the Table or whatever. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Because I understand that's a concern.
Thanks. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. We're going to take a two-minute recess.
Forget about something. Let me just point out that the Falmouth Foodification Council, on their annual plant sale, they asked us to waive the fee, and I.
That's a different, yeah, we take that up at a different time.
At a different time.
Yeah. When it comes to, we have a fee waiving waiver policy, and that'll come up at and, on another agenda. But thanks for reminding us.
No problem.
I got to stand up.
Bye.
Anyone have any comments they might want to make on the budget or a motion?
I would move that we refer the fiscal year 16 budget to the Finance Committee. Welcome to it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. It's yours. Okay, the next is we're going to hear an ESCO report. Paul Gentile, I think, there he is, Paul. Our ESCO coordinator is here, and we're going to get a great report from, from him on all the different ESCO projects that we've funded, whether it's in the neighborhood, what, I've forgotten how much money.
Two and a half million dollars.
Two point five million.
Two point five million.
Can I just make a couple of brief?
Sure, Heather, by all means, go ahead.
I just want to recognize Paul for his really tremendous behind-the-scenes work over the last nine months where this project, two point five million dollars worth of investment, has occurred in all the buildings he'll talk about in some detail here in the next couple of minutes. Really building collaborative relationships with folks in these many buildings to make sure that the projects are done safely, on time, obviously within budget, without a change order, zero change orders, very effectively, ahead of schedule. And it really has to do with the very effective procurement process that Paul assisted us with, resulting in our engagement of Trane. Greg Anderson, their project manager, has been really tremendous, great to work with, very responsive, responsible, all the things that you expect to have from a highly qualified contracting firm. And really, those building managers, Marcel with the high school, Marcel Sanchez, Patrick Murphy, who's the facilities manager at the high school, and Charles Newton in the town. And it's really been very, very efficient, and it really is the work that Paul's put in to making sure that the relationships are there and that people have the information they need when the projects are going on. I really felt the need to recognize Paul's great work.
Hey, thank you, Heather.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, good evening. I'm just going to take a few minutes of your time and talk about the ESCO project. Several years ago, I stood up here and talked about this project, trying to elicit support, trying to outline what an ESCO project was. At this point, I'm standing here two years later with a project that is 95% completed. As I stand here, I want to do two things. I want to applaud you. I want to tell you how proud I am of the town of Falmouth for taking on a concept that was actually unknown, not readily identified in construction projects, not well-known in the town and in the schools. But here we stand, two years later, with projects as 95% complete, mainly because of all these people. I applaud Julian and Heather for taking this concept on. With their strategic direction and mentoring, this thing has moved forward. It's moved forward practically issue-free. What I'd like to do tonight, just for the next few minutes, is talk about this project and where we are. We still have a few things left in the project, but we're essentially almost there. Here's the recap. The construction phase of this project started.
Excuse me, Paul, do we want to dim the lights?
Oh, that would be great. Is that better?
That's good.
Thank you, select.
You're right on it.
The construction phase of this project began July 14, when Greg Anderson, Trane, drove up in front of the rec center and officially started this project. As you remember, back in November 2013, taxpayers of Falmouth approved the $2.5 million project, or Phase 1, as we call it. To date, this project has been under budget, on schedule. To date, this project has been under budget, on schedule, and issue-free. When we first looked at the projects that had to be done, we estimated the timeframe between nine and 12 months for construction. We've actually completed 95% of this project in 182 days, six months. And as I said, full completion is scheduled for the spring of 2015. In reality, we probably would have had the entire project completed by the end of the year. However, we're waiting for the space reallocation to come in from Town Hall to finalize. Once that's finalized, that information is going to be given to us, and the Trane engineers can engineer, if you will, the redesign of the HVAC heating system for this building. So if we didn't have that study going on, this project would have been done in 182 days. Here's the scope of the project. Number of energy projects, if you remember back in the November Town Meeting, 40 projects. Those 40 projects addressed five new boilers. 241 LED lighting fixtures were installed in various buildings, including this building. $333 doors and windows were weather stripped. 37 new windows, primarily at East Falmouth Library. 22 new VFD, variable frequency drive, systems were installed in the buildings. That's not one, it should be 33 walk-in cooler and freezer systems were installed in the schools. Complete control systems were installed in two buildings. Transformers were upgraded in one building. And HVAC heating systems were upgraded in two buildings. Total number of project tasks were 341. I was going to bring in that list of project tasks. It's something I printed out. It's a piece of paper that goes down about as long as this wall. And those were the individual tasks that we had to coordinate with Trane for each building, each step, each system, all done in 192 days. The next slide, Heather. These buildings were addressed by the ESCO project. East Falmouth Library, the East Elementary School, Falmouth High School, Lawrence School, Morris Pond School, Mullen Hall, North Falmouth Elementary, Police Headquarters, Direct Center, School Administration Building, T-Ticket School, and Town Hall. I walked in today, I was sitting down near Heather's office, and Bob came up to me, custodian in the building. He said, "Paul, how's that project going?" I said, "Good, Bob." He said, "How you doing? How you thinking about it? Isn't that the sign of a well-executed administered project? You don't hear anything about it, it just gets hotter." This is astounding. We had over 100 contractors and subcontractors on the property and all these facilities from July to present time. All of those people had to be rechecked. Our HR department with Kathy had to do that processing over the summer. A yonin effort, I think, for that. Over 100 people involved. The next slide, Heather. Strong support from the stakeholders. They've already acknowledged the Selectmen, Heather, Heather and Julian, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, the Superintendent of the Schools, the Business Manager, Pat Murphy, Custodians, and the Principals. In effect, what we did in this project, to help it succeed, I've worked in private industry long enough, the academic world, and now governmental work, to know that projects don't succeed unless you develop teams. Trane came in here, and first of all, established the credibility. Once they established their credibility, it was easier to develop a team from the Principal, Custodian, Facility Manager level. It was very important we did that. This thing never would have happened without the success of building those teams right to the Custodian level. We held bi-weekly progress meetings with municipal and school staff every other week. At one time, we had 25 people involved in these meetings. Everyone from a lot of the authorities people, to administrators, to facilities people, to Trane people, all coordinating this team, step by step. We brought the facility and the custodial staffs into the project early, built the projects around them. So this project, if you will, is not built from the top down. It was built from the outside in and from the bottom up. So we actually developed a team. If we're lucky enough to continue in this project in a Phase 2 or Phase 3, we have that teamwork already established. And the most important thing is, we have the credibility established. Next slide, Heather. In this project, the ESCO saves time and money. Trane ensures that all projects are cost-effective. We have a budget. As I said, we're under budget, and that's monitored by Trane, myself, and our owner agent, you remember Dave Ward, who was hired as our owner agent to act as an auditor in the process. All our contractors and suppliers are accountable and corey-tested. Remember when I talked about this project a while ago? I talked about why these type of projects succeed because of accountability. When something happens in this project, you don't go to this vendor, or that vendor, or this vendor, or that vendor. You go to one person, the project manager for Trane, and he gets it first. And everyone knows that. Experienced, dedicated project management. In my opinion, we were assigned the best Trane had to offer in this region. I think Heather will attest to this, she's worked with him many, many times. He's responsive, he's technically proficient. And the most important thing is he knows how to work with people to get things done. And thus form a team. The important thing about Trane is they've pretty much seen it all. And I'll be honest with you, the Trane project is a big project in our eyes, but in their eyes, it's another project that has to be done. They're up in Boston now, Greg is up in Boston coordinating a multimillion-dollar hospital renovation. So there's very few surprises. In our situation, there was very few surprises, but they were handled smoothly and professionally. And if you read the newspaper articles last week, Helen Kennedy said, "They were professional, they were courteous, and we never even knew these projects were going on in our buildings." They were done off to the side. Additional funding. We composed grants, the one the DOE are. We received $25,000 to fund the ESCO Coordinator position. We received $12,000 to reimburse the owner agent. And you talked about the CUSP, or we talked about the CUSP a little bit last week, or it was talked about in the paper. This CUSP award was an interest subsidy to Falmouth, which will save us roughly $15,000 annually for 19 years. Jennifer was good enough to work with us on that. She spearheaded that effort and obtained that financing. What are the benefits to Falmouth? First of all, the ESCO project was a proven success. Phase 1 has guaranteed energy savings of $89,000 to Falmouth. When we had the original audit done two and a half years ago, Trane identified $13 million in energy-saving opportunities for Falmouth. They also identified in the audit that Falmouth could save a half a million dollars in costs. This ESCO agreement that was developed is, in essence, an open-ended agreement. We can move ahead and add new projects easily. And if we ever want to, in the future, look at a Phase 2 to address more items within the town, in essence, the rest of the $13 million, we can customize it and customize the contract. So Falmouth is ideally positioned to save time and money by implementing projects through the proven ESCO approach. That's essentially all I have to say. In a nutshell, I think a couple things are important. Thank you all for your commitment to this project, because I know at first, it was difficult. It's difficult for me also, because I continually had to sell it and sell it, and so did you. But I think you should be proud of yourselves for sticking with it and moving forward. Are there any questions?
Sue.
I heard Heather say something like, "We saved even more," so I want to make sure that gets mentioned, but I have two others.
Go ahead. Comments? One, you can see what energy Paul brings to the project, and just really a great job bringing us here. We're really looking forward to the upgrades to the HVAC in this building, in this room, in fact. But the QECBs were presented by the Finance Director a couple of weeks ago, and those really come in higher than the $15,000, it's more like $40,000 a year interest savings. And that really is the cherry on top. We did not have the qualified environmental bonds at the time we awarded the project. It was something we were pursuing. We were one of only three communities that were eligible for a very small allocation of funds, and I think we took that on share of that. So it's a great recognition that it really was a very high-quality environmental project that was a good project before, and is a better project with it. And the other key piece is, yes, you can amend the contract subject to appropriation. These projects are not free, there is an investment, and there is an increase in the capital to fund it. But the outcome of it is obviously very valuable to the community.
Thank you.
Then on to two things. One is, as a construction litigator, I have 25 years of experience. You almost knocked me off my chair when you said, "under budget, on time." And I think-
No changes at all.
And no changes. Well, I think that really speaks to the fact of your methodology. You really, the first thing you do is you go to the boots on the ground, and you work with people who know the buildings. And I think that was, you know, that's just something that can't be understated, how that carries you through any of these jobs. And then my second question, I don't even, I'm not sure if it's relevant or not, because I haven't been that specifically involved in this. The Lawrence windows, do you know anything about that at all? Is that something that you've looked at?
That's a dialogue that's going on now, I can defer that question to Heather.
Well, let me just say why I ask. Because, you know, with all of this moving on, you know, that was the only hiccup that I was kind of confused by. And Nick Gol, in fact, made a very, I think, a nice summary and some good points. But I just think it's always a good process of when you have, you know, something that starts and then does, and you don't follow through, just to really take the advantage of a public forum and answer the question, you know, best you can right now in a few minutes, just, you know, if you have that ability.
What I can tell you is that the Lawrence windows, that project was included in this $13 million initial scope that I talked about. From the $13 million, we went through many negotiations and discussions, and we were down to $2.5 million. And that particular project did make the final cut. I can tell you this, though, that within our project management meetings, that project came up again several weeks ago, by Patrick Murphy. And he asked me about that original project and what the scope was. And a dialogue now has started between he and Trane. And I'm not part of that, but the dialogue has started between them.
Okay, thank you.
If it becomes more relevant, I'll probably get into the process. But the dialogue has started.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just clarify? I think we touched on this the last time, but I do want to make certain it's clear. The Lawrence windows were not withdrawn from that list of projects at the behest of the town. The town had anticipated that being an included project. At the request of the schools, the Lawrence windows were removed. So that is the reason that that project was not included and has not been completed. That was a decision that was made, and we respect the authority of the schools to make that judgment call, and that was a call that they made. So I want to be clear that the town was fully prepared to move forward with the Lawrence windows being part of the ESCO, but we respect the fact that that was not to be.
Thank you.
Sam.
I ask two technical questions. One, you had a transformer that was replaced, was that the electrical service to the building?
Those were the electric service to the building. We replaced those transformers two weeks ago. We had to shut the total service down in the building, in Mullen Hall. We did it over Thanksgiving vacation. You can assess, if you will, the importance of these projects. In order to shut that, in order to complete that project, we had to shut the power to the school off. We also had to coordinate with all the teachers in the school to unplug every piece of equipment in every room. Because what could happen, once we started the transformers again, the electrical jolt could have impacted the computers in those, or copiers, or the plug load in those buildings. So that had, all had to be coordinated between myself, Patrick Murphy, and his staff. And I'll tell you the exact comment that the computer person said from the school. When Trane and I talked to her, she said, "Boy," she said, "I'm a little surprised." She said, "This is one of the first times someone has come to us and actually talked about the project proactively before it actually happened." And that went off without a hitch. Power came on, and we did it, so that we did it like on Thursday, so that if we had a problem, we'd have a couple days to recoup before school actually started. That's the expertise you get when you work with professionals. They do this every day as a job, and they know the ins and outs.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
The School Administration Building, that heating and ventilating was part of the project?
Yes, it was originally. That was taken off the list.
I'll have to ask you on the side, why that meeting room was so hot?
Well, that issue, that particular building, like a lot of buildings, needs work. And there certainly, there was a lot to do in that building, it just didn't make the dollar cuts. But it's still part of the $13 million queue up there. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Paul. Great job. Peter McConerty, the poor thing. We're not going to let this happen to you again. He doesn't have to come in early tomorrow, does he? Peter. All right, this is the flood mitigation controls for the Yilprun Bridge, which was, has been continued from December 22nd.
Yeah, has been continued. As you know, we had, we went through a presentation a couple of weeks ago showing the damage that we received at the bridge in 2012, 2013. Basically, it's just a matter of time for it to happen again. In your packets, there was a new, somewhat new schematic, it's in color, I don't know if you have the color. Yeah, they're in color. Basically, what it was, is we're looking at the same location as it was before, before it was on a five-foot stand, dropping it down to basically ground level. It'll be a few inches above the bulkhead, base of the bulkhead. We're looking at that now. We met with some folks from the Woods Hole community last Thursday. We have our contractor coming in this Thursday to have another meeting to see if it can be done. This morning, I had discussions with the electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, and the building commissioner on this, so there was a few questions to be asked. Couple of the options that might happen is the color of the generator. We'll see if we can get maybe a battleship gray. There's another pump, as you can see just at the top of it and the other side of the bulkhead. It's in a battleship gray color, so that'll fit in rather nicely. I will have to say that with this option, it's not our preferred option, because it's, of course, it's further lower to the water. But the floodplain in this area is elevation, the new elevation maps is elevation 15. You have to be two feet above elevation 15 to build, that's elevation 17. Where the bridge tender was standing, as I showed last couple of weeks ago, on his main floor, that's elevation 8.5, so we're already nine feet in the hole. And this is going to be four feet below that. So I had a conversation with the building inspector about it. Basically, what it is, is we're installing a generator to sit to preserve and save the bridge. We're not trying to save the generator, we're trying to save the bridge. So we're trying to save the pumps and the bridge. So this will take care of day-to-days, it'll take care of astronomical tides, it'll take care of power outages, it'll take care of tropical storms, it'll take care of category ones. If it starts getting higher than that, all of Woods Hole is going to basically be in- trouble because the water's going to be rising in that area. But the generator was sized, we went through the whole thing about the sizing of the generator. It's appropriate for the bridge to run the bridge and the controls and the pumps. So the area right now is one of the options that we're looking at. The second option was to take it and turn it sideways and put it on top of the bulkhead, but that's very close to the window. And that bridge tender actually uses that window in the summertime to communicate with the navigators and actually to be able to see out that window, so code-wise, it's not going to fit in that area.
A question I may throw a little monkey wrench in it. The generator's purpose is to run both the pumps and to run the bridge itself?
The generator's purpose is to run the bridge, the pumps, correct.
The pumps certainly don't need nearly as much power as the bridge.
Correct.
Is there any option of running the pumps off of solar, off of wind, and doing that as two separate things, saying, yes, this generator, or some generator, could be used to operate the bridge when it powers out, but the pumps, for me, is a bigger priority? Could those be done? I would think it'd be way less energy to run these pumps. Could that be a battery pack that's in the roof of the bridge tender's house that is recharged by either electric or solar?
It's a question that can be asked. We didn't go that route. We're trying to do one full system, one full combined system. The pumps, they're four-inch pumps. They'd be less than to run the bridge, but they're still good-sized pumps.
And those are the things I really want to make sure, don't lose power. And if this generator's going to be potentially underwater, you're not going to have any power to run the pumps to be able to keep the bridge safe. But if you had power that could run all the time.
As a secondary backup to the...
Or, again, just to run, you know, again, seeing two different solutions. One, power to make sure the pumps are running. Another one, if we want to run the bridge, which is not a luxury, but in some ways more of a luxury to me than keeping water out of that engine room.
Right. The original design that we had, the elevated generator, the two bridge main girders, you can't see it in this photo, but I showed it in the presentation, the two girders that go through the concrete wall, to the counterpet wall, they're at a certain elevation. Once the water goes up above that elevations, we did block it, but the water's still going to be able to come in. We wanted to have the bottom of the generator above that area, so we'd be able to take care of it until that area. And then if that water gets that high, then it's just, it's going to come in either way. So that's why we had it raised. Now we're looking at, it's still going to be raised, but it's going to be lowered down to the basic. But this is a full system. What's going to happen here is if we brought down portable generators, what have you, we wouldn't know if there was a power outage in Woods Hole. It wouldn't tell us if there was a power outage. And this is, the bridge is at the very end of the N-Star line, it's the last building on the line. So what this will do is it's going to be hooked up to a call-out, so if there's a blackout, a brownout, if the pumps come on, it's going to automatically call out to the public works facility, and they'll be able to, they'll know what's going on, be able to come down. But if, I know last time it was mentioned putting in a portable generator. By the time the public works got down to Woods Hole to put in a, to get that hooked up and plugged in to put in the generator, that bridge would already be in some pretty good trouble. So that's the reason we're going for this whole, for this whole system. And what we're doing with the pumps, the pumps were actually designed by our water consultant that did the water treatment plant. The generator was designed by our maintenance contractor. We all came together to come up with one package that would fit the whole, the whole system, so.
So have you dealt with the issue of noise, you know, in the neighborhood?
So what it is, is it's a generator. It's going to make noise, but it's a, it's not an air-cooled generator, it's a liquid-cooled generator. It's going to be a little less quiet. It's the Quiet Series generator. You'll hear it when it's running. These things exercise once a week. You'll hear it, you know, fifteen minutes in the morning. If the bridge is open, maybe the bridge tender on a Monday morning from nine, nine-fifteen, before the restaurants, before the places open up down there. And the only other time you'd know that, if that's running, is if it had to come on because it was a power failure, so.
Peter, why does it say that the enclosure is optional? I mean, couldn't you insulate that? It would help with the noise?
No, that would just be basically for aesthetics. That's just like a fence that we had surrounding the outsides of it. And actually, that would have to be far enough away from the generator. For that generator, that cabinet, you need eighteen inches all the way around for combustible. So that was just to cover it if there was, for aesthetics. But I think the location where this is, where we've been talking, it seems to be one of the places that might be appropriate, that we might be able to put some shrubs around it on each side of it.
Isn't this a public way? Is it feel like a gift shop or something down here?
Yeah, there's a building down there, it's called, I think it's called Hand Works. It's a building that's open. I don't know if it's open all year round, I think it's open certain times of the year. So we have to make sure that we can keep that area accessible for the building.
And it's not, you don't think that would be a possibility, you would need to protect it from vandalism or graffiti or anything like that?
I wouldn't worry about it for vandalism or for graffiti. Someone might sit on it if they're down there waiting, having a lunch or something, what have you, but...
And it's, okay, it's sturdy enough.
Yeah. One thing you do want to be careful with them out there, since it's an outside union, you want to be careful with the saltwater getting out of it. Those cabinets are pretty well, it's a, the engine and the motor is inside the cabinet because cabinet's designed by a third-party company, but you want to just watch out for the seaweed and the corrosion. And I think I mentioned at the last, the last meeting is, this is our second phase. We already did the first phase. When the bridge went out, that bridge was out for, that bridge was out for four months, and it was two weeks before the public works went down, started opening the bridges, and we were open it once a week. But the coast guard was not too happy with that. They want that to be an operational bridge. It's not really a safe harbor, but it's considered a safe harbor for the boats that go down there, who uses it, the MBL. They'll go to that area before the storms. And usually, what will happen, when a storm happens, twelve hours before that storm, we drive that bridge down. It has locks, those bridge have drive locks in it. So what happens is they drive the locks into a basic chamber in the roadway, so if anything happens, a wind or anything else, the bridge won't bounce. So they lock that down. It's closed, it's closed for the storm, and then they reopen it again.
So what's the next step plan? I think you're still meeting with the people, local people?
So I think there's a few steps that are going to happen now. I've already met with several of the members of the community. Now, this Thursday, coming Thursday, we also have our maintenance contractor coming down to talk and discuss the options. And then after that, we'll see what we have, we'll make a decision and go from there. What I'd like to do, if it's acceptable for the board, so I won't keep on coming back unless there's a big problem, I don't imagine. It seemed we were pretty much, seemed to be pretty good last week with the decisions that we made. We just got to finalize them, as if I could work with, through the town manager and have maybe a decision made through the town manager. This is the second phase, the first phase, to bring this back to existing conditions. We've already been paid through, FEMA's already given us a check for seventy-five percent of the value. So this is a mitigation phase, so they allow a two-to-one to repair it. So we'll get seventy-five percent of this back too, also for the bridge.
I guess I would love to see if the maintenance contractor, someone to look into the questions to whether there would be any advantage to doing it. I understand often solving two problems at once is a good idea, but whether solving the two problems separately has any advantages, you know, that if it means that we know we can always run those pumps, that we don't have to worry about water getting into this generator, I would see that enough advantage and...
Yeah, yeah. We can, we'll ask the question.
That'd be great, I appreciate that.
And I have...
I don't need to give the answer back, but as long as the question's asked, I'm happy.
Great. And I have complete faith in this maintenance contractor. We've had him since 2009. They basically manage fifty to sixty percent of Mast Dot Bridges. They fix all the bridges. When you call them on a twenty-four emergency, they're on-site within an hour and a half. They have workers all throughout the state, electricians, mill rights, so they're on-site. And when we did have problems when it first opened up, they were right there, right through the night. So the contractor that we do have is very capable of the work that they do. So we kind of go, we kind of go through them with all the different projects that are going on, with the electric issues that we have down here, not just the generator, but with the pumps, with everything that we've had down there. They kind of kept us up and running. They've made some jigs and some dyes for us down there, so when the bridge was out, it was, made it a little easier for the public works to be able to open it, open the bridge.
Any other questions, comments?
So, kind of where are we then?
So where we are right now, we'll have a meeting on Thursday. We'll talk to the Woods Hole community, and we'll talk to the maintenance contractor to see if this is a placement for the generator. Right now, we have calls in to see if the cabinet can be painted a different color. And one of the questions that the building department had this morning, that the plumbing inspector had, that bulkhead is considered an opening, so we'll have to do something with the exhaust, so. But we're working with that. We'll work with the contractor on that.
So what is it that you want to happen, that if you have a vote, that you, we allow the town manager to have the decision with you in making the rest of the decisions?
Well, if it would be acceptable to the board and acceptable to the town manager, I think if we could, we've been, actually, Julian and I have been working on this since it happened in 2012, and Ray, the director, if it's acceptable, I think we might be able to work through to see if we can get a resolution to it.
If we could receive a green light from the board to proceed, I think we're down to very few options here. I think you need a generator. It needs to be essentially in that location, and the only issue is the relative elevation and the color of it and the, you know, some reasonable screening, and then we're happy to explore the standalone system that Selectman Jones had suggested as to whether that is a viable option as well. If it is, we'll be happy to further explore it. If it's not an option that we can pursue, then we'll, you know, advise the board of that. But I think in any case, you need to have this generator. We don't have any other options that we're aware of for other locations.
I have an option.
Excuse me, you'll be recognized when we're ready, Mr. Fenner. So...
Okay, we need a motion.
Well, yeah, so what would we do then? I mean, when you consider...
We'd just ask for if the board would allow us to proceed along the lines that Town Engineer Peter McConerty has outlined as far as the location of the generator and installation of it, and at the same time, explore the potential for a standalone system to conceivably operate the pumps alone.
But at the same time, you're going to continue to work with the people down in Woods Hole?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Like I said, it's an ongoing, we've had ongoing meetings with people in the community, so...
Mr. Fenner, you had a comment?
Can I see that picture, Pete? What you've done here is basically lower the location of this. I just wondered if you ever considered that you could mount it in this area on a bracket higher up off the ground? You could cover it with the same shingles that the building is covered with, and you could put a shed roof over the top. If the deck was open on the inside, the guy could just crawl underneath and maintain it that way, and you gave yourself five, six, seven feet, which seems to be the only drawback of this location, the height. And it's really not that difficult. The building has a strong enough foundation. The thing only weighs about eight hundred pounds. I don't see why that isn't considered. It would be completely out of the way. You wouldn't even know it was there.
Can take that under advisement?
Yeah, what has to, we can look into it. What has to happen is it has to be away from combustible areas. You have to have that clearance room, and also for maintenance for a contractor to be able to work, if they didn't work on it, so.
Use non-combustible materials.
Please, Mr. Fenner, please don't talk from the floor.
I mean, there's options to do, there's options, I mean, you could, you know, you could go, everything's a cost, that's all. I mean, there are options for, you know, so.
And Madam Chair and members of the board, I think one of the pieces of feedback we got from the individuals at Woods Hole was they're very concerned about raising it to a higher elevation because of the aesthetics that it would create in that area. And that certainly would make it much more visible, even though we're screened, and I think that's a great suggestion to have the screening, but it would be in addition to the visible items there around the bridge tenders area. So I think there would be, I think there are concerns about that, from what I understand.
What I got, I think what I got from one of the meeting last week too, is there were concern from visibility, from not so much from the boats, as much as from the street, coming up from the street to be able to see it off the sidewalks, so.
Okay, final comment, Mr. Fenner.
If you did want it to cover the outside of that with the shingles and the wood, you could just use non-combustible materials on the inside wall with the proper airspace, same way you'd put in a wood stove or anything else, and no one would even know the thing was there. It'd just like, look like a small addition to the building.
Thank you for your comments. All right, so the motion would be to...
Permit the town manager...
Yeah, to...
To pursue the project?
To pursue, yes, and then come back to us at some point when there is a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Others in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, unanimous. Okay, thank you, Peter.
In one last comment, I'd just like to, the opening comments earlier tonight that was made for the Chapter Ninety funding, that's going to go a long way with our roadways in town, because the funding that we have right now, there's a lot of roads at the end of the money, and we're not really making it. And a lot of our sidewalks are coming up, and we're trying to replace some of the sidewalks around the schools area, so that's going to make a big hit for the roadways. And we'll be starting our roadway, our roadway work on our roadway list mid-February, so getting ready for the 2015 season, so that's going to be...
Good, so that extra six hundred and some thousand will go a long way.
We have some long roads in Farnland that need some work, on the shore side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did they get the evals, your evals? I don't have them in this bag.
Yes.
Okay. Did everybody get a copy of the evaluation form for the town manager?
No.
It wasn't in your packet?
It was a separate email.
Oh, it was a separate email. Okay, what I suggested to Diane was that in addition to emailing it to you, that she also put hard copies in your boxes, so they may not be there today, but sometime in the next couple of days. And if two weeks, the idea is each one fills this out individually, and it's pretty straightforward, I think, the discussions. And then at the end, you turn them into me, and then I collate them or summarize them or make them into one, and then include all the comments along with that. And then in open session, we discuss the evaluation with the town manager. The open meeting law requires that it must be done in open session.
What's the timing?
Well, I was going to ask that you get them back to me in two weeks, like two weeks from tonight, the twenty-sixth?
Okay.
If that's possible, Sam?
Yeah, a question on page seven. It's the current employee goals and professional development plan, and there's just blanks. And don't we need some...
There'll be an updated version transmitted from Diane.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, when we, when we go back, when we go over this, we will have his goals for next year to discuss.
But you wouldn't want to give that to us before we do this ourselves? Wouldn't that be included in our evaluation, that's all?
Yeah, that'll be forthcoming.
Okay, yeah. Okay, is that okay, the twenty-sixth, that's two weeks? Okay. It's not as onerous as it used to be, the form. That's good. Okay, Selectman's reports? Anybody, Sam?
No.
No?
All right, I'm going to do it quick. Three meetings, conservation commission, community preservation commission, and then the specialist working group meeting. I want to say that I have multiple meetings with small groups, the town, Julian and Heather and Jennifer, over the proposed town budget. I really appreciate their patience in putting up with it. They've certainly convinced me that this is a process that's ongoing and that things will move. One of the things I discovered was that things do move over a year's time. Public safety, for instance, that number was raised twice last year for 2015, and so the percentages that show up in there, perhaps not as, you have to know what the baseline is, and the baseline has changed. So I've learned a lot from the process, but I do appreciate their patience and their reassurance, and I'm hoping that things will move, you know, perhaps a little bit more, more funding will be given to the school department because it's a concern of mine that includes public health issues as well, because children are impacted by public health issues throughout the town. Nurses, principals, all are feeling added pressure. This town is not the same as it was ten to fifteen years ago. The incidence of drug abuse, we have the normal domestic issues in families, but that's impacting the schools and students' ability to learn, and I think we can't neglect that. And it's also impacting... And it's also impacting the rest of our town in a lot of ways, and I hope we kind of take a closer look at that, because it tends to be invisible for most of us. And yet it's there, and it does degrade the productivity and the quality of life for many of our citizens, so I'll just raise that as a quick issue. That's it. Becky?
Well, just to comment on that, I know the governor has made this addiction and overdose issue one of his top priorities. So I'm hoping that we might see some additional funding come our way to help support them.
And I'm the ASO for the Substance Abuse Committee, and Karen immediately sent around sort of announcements, and the wheels are turning in terms of plans. So I think the entire community, including the schools, has that, those additional funding sources to do a lot of this work, because they are really experts right now at dealing with the problems that have existed for a long time and that have grown, and they have, they've been waiting for this funding to really put a lot of programs in motion. So I think you're going to see a lot of good progress fairly quickly going forward.
That'd be great.
And anybody else?
Briefly, the planning board had a thirty-minute meeting last week. It was great.
Good, good. You're not going to come off that one.
Okay, you want to...
No.
Town manager?
I'm watching the clock.
You're watching the clock.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just a reminder that Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices will be closed next Monday, January nineteenth, and observance of the Martin Luther King National Holiday. And you've already noted the breakfast event, which is scheduled and has been an annual event we look forward to. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great.
Can I just ask, Mr. Suso, do you have tickets in the office, or we just do those?
Personnel office has those.
Okay.
They're also available at the door, if you don't...
If you call and make a reservation.
Call and make a reservation.